And actually, for all the people that live in Belmont, this ended up being their number one issue they had that they were seeking action on when they were doing their area plan. Came out far and above everything else in their survey. So it's really good to see the work getting done and really appreciate what they've done with this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Is there any other comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We already did that, Madam Chair.
Um, I thought we just had the motion, the second you were making comment.
Yes, and therefore.
Call the question, yeah.
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, item number four.
Madam Chair, Christopher Tressler here is to address that from Public Works. I believe you should be on the line.
Okay.
And if I could start, Madam.
Turn it over to Supervisor Babbitt to see what he wanted to say about it, okay? Thank you, Supervisor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to kind of take a moment and to, you know, kind of remind the board some of the work that we're doing on the Mount Eldon Estates area, both on forest and off forest in terms of the flood mitigation efforts. This last week, the contractors, I think as many of us know, started work on the on-forest piece of the alluvial fan stabilization. It goes to show that we have incredibly important public health and safety and flood control work to do even while we are managing arguably one of the most disruptive events in the last century in this country. And so that continues to move forward. And this is just a small piece of this. This is work that the Homeowners Association, myself, the Flood Control District, Christopher, Lucinda, folks, put a project that, you know, is in the big scale of things, important and meaningful to make sure that we are doing what is reasonable and appropriate to help prepare ourselves for this upcoming monsoon season. So I just want to recognize folks' good work. And then Christopher, if you had a comment about the actual project, that would be great. And also what the completion time is when they're going to be cleaning this sediment out of these basins.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Babbitt, we expect this project to begin within a week. And it's the removal of sediment from these basins that are providing a level of flood mitigation to the homes downstream, in between the homes and the museum fire burn area. So it's a project that we identified that we could complete this year, that we've met with all the residents, and we have cooperative agreements, and we have construction easements. And so we can go to construction right away. That's all I was going to say.
Supervisor Babbitt, any other questions for Chris, hearing what his comments were? Okay, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved, Madam Chair, thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Matt Ryan. I'll second the motion and compliment Supervisor Babbitt on his use of the community initiative money to assist, along with all the work that Public Works has, and flood control, and everybody else has been doing here on this project, as well as throughout the museum fire flood mitigation project.
Thank you very much Supervisor Ryan. There's a, so there was a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those against the motion, please say nay. Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you. We're now going to go to item number seven. This is consideration and possible action to approve an amendment to the contract with DBAD GUY LLC doing business as Hotel Aspen Flagstaff. And this is for use of the building as a quarantine housing unit in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Jimmy Jane? Is available for any questions? Supervisor Babbitt, did you have a particular question or comment about this item?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. So I had a couple of questions and then kind of some comments as the board has started the conversations around fiscal impact of this on not only the short term but our long-term budget. And so I had a couple of specific questions related to this amendment. The first one is, is the passage of this amendment required for potential federal reimbursement? And that is a question I put out to either Jimmy or Kim or whoever's on the phone.
Madam Chair, I know that Dr. Marie Peoples is on the phone and is prepared to help us answer the questions that you may have. So I'll turn that question to Marie.
Hi, thank you County Manager Jane. Actually, I think Kim Musselman was getting ready to respond. I'll start and then pass it over to her. But as we've shared, and I think Mr. Peterson will share sometime as well, we're still trying to dissect the CARES reimbursements and what is coming through in terms of federal and state funding. The information that we have received so far does state that it is required in order to receive reimbursement specifically for the individuals that we are housing there. With that, Ms. Musselman or perhaps Scott Richardson, I believe, is also on the line.
Madam Chair, Dr. Peoples, Kim Musselman is on and is prepared to help address this question.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair Supervisors. I was just going to add and to answer Supervisor Babbitt's question that this amendment was specifically done to include the federal clauses that are related to the funding to be able to be eligible to be reimbursed and to have us in compliance so that we are eligible for that reimbursement, and that there were no material changes to the contract.
Okay, so the answer is yes, this is required. So what does this mean for the first month of operations in terms of opportunity for federal reimbursement? We are considering this about, you know, a little over, you know, right around three and a half weeks into our rental period. And so what does that mean for the first essentially month, $190,000 worth of rent in terms of reimbursement opportunities?
So thank you for that question, Madam Chair Supervisor Babbitt. My understanding is that because we have put these things in place, and especially because when we actually submitted our request and have forwarded through DMA and then through FEMA, we had in our letter indicated the date in which we actually stood up our hotel and had, and the date to which when we had entered into contractual agreements. So my understanding is that this brings us into compliance, even retro back to our date. However, I am not the expert in this regard. And if Scott from Purchasing or others are on and have any additional information, I would welcome their comment. But we can certainly look into it further and will absolutely do so.
Supervisor Babbitt, did you want to add to that?
So I think that helps me. I didn't know if someone else was jumping in. I have a few other comments to make. I don't know. Did someone want to, did Scott want to come in on that or anything?
Let me see who would like.
I have a question.
Okay, sure Supervisor Fowler, can I go ahead and just maybe wrap this question up and see if there's other staff that are on the line that might provide additional information? And then I'll come to you next, please. So are there others on the line from the Copio County staff that can add to the comments to answer Supervisor Babbitt's question?
Madam Chair, this is Eric Peterson. I do not see Scott Richardson or the Finance Department on the meeting at this time, just so you're aware.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let me move to Supervisor Fowler. Supervisor Fowler?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So the question I have is, people that are being quarantined, are they only, is this only for the Flagstaff residents? Or where are these individuals coming from? The patients that will be quarantined, is it throughout the county that's going to be coming here? Or is it just the Flagstaff region? Thank you.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Fowler? This is Marie, thank you. I'll go ahead and answer that. So thank you for the question Supervisor Fowler. So we have two different methods of referral or intake for the quarantine hotel. So primarily with our hospitals is where it was initiated because this was seen as a continuum of care to reduce the transmission of COVID-19 into our congregate settings, so mostly within our shelters. So Page Banner and FMC are both referral sources. And then last week, we opened up that referring ability to shelters and we corresponded with each of the shelters within our communities across the county and shared those protocols with them as well so they would have access to the quarantine and isolation hotel. To date, we have not received any included in the shelters.
Can you repeat that last part again, Marie? Because I think it came across a little garbled. It was to date. It's garbled.
Yeah, someone's got.
Do you have everyone's attention, please? You really want me to mute because we're hearing your comments. Hello? Thank you so much. Okay, hang on, Dr. Peoples, hold on one second, please. So just for members of the public, we are really happy that you're joining us today. We would just ask that if you would please mute your phones or mute the computer that you're using. Otherwise, we're going to be privy to all of your great conversations at home. And you probably don't want us to listen to that, okay? Thank you so much. Go ahead, Dr. Peoples.
Thank you Supervisor Archileta. I was just sharing that to date, we have not received any inquiries from shelters across our county trying to get someone admitted within the quarantine and isolation hotel. So we will continue reaching out to the shelters to make sure that they do know that we stand ready as a resource.
Okay, super, thank you. Supervisor Fowler, did you want, do you have any follow-ups?
No, I just wanted to see how we're going to be handling that. Thank you for describing the process as to how that will be done. Thank you.
Great.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Babbitt.
Great, thank you. So a couple of comments on it. We obviously had the contract piece that we worked on last week. You know, I really want to continue to applaud the county for really coming out strong out of the gate in regards to drive-up testing and also providing a place for folks who are housing insecure to self-isolate. I think we did the right decision by moving, you know, decisively in that and staff should be commended for that. I do think it is time for us to have a conversation about the utilization of this facility and the cost of this facility. As we saw, heard in our last budget piece, we are, you know, kind of looking at $1 million a month in kind of response costs. This is going to be, this facility is north of probably $200,000 after you do all that, the kind of sanitizing of rooms and things like that. Jimmy and I have been talking about on kind of multiple occasions the utilization rate. And, you know, the utilization rate has been fairly low. And that's not a bad thing, it's not a good thing, it's just what the number is. And so, you know, I really would like to have a conversation about how we could have an amendment that actually goes to a utilization-based contract. The service is critically important, that we have a place who have medical orders for self-isolation or quarantine. That is not what's up for discussion. It is the utilization rate relative to the cost of the service. Obviously, $200,000 a month, and I believe we've had about 44 guests today. We're almost through the first month. You know, that math is math that is a pretty, has a pretty hefty price tag for it. Hotels in a hotel-rich environment would, I believe, be worth having a discussion with on a utilization-based approach. So we are not paying a flat fee for 120 bed, excuse me, 120-room hotel, but we are doing it based on utilization. Again, I want to just emphasize, you know, when this came out, we came out, you know, with a strong, and we needed to. Now that we've had a month in, you know, my recommendation would be to have a conversation of bringing Amendment either three very quickly that allows for a utilization-based recalculation. I think we have eight people in there now in a 120-room hotel. We actually had a couple nights with no one in there. And that's not a judgment statement, it's just how are we going to marshal and steward our resources through what is going to be a very long haul? We've seen these first inklings of what the budgetary implications are for jurisdictions, and it is going to be profound. 30% to 40% is starting to come out in fourth quarter. State's already projecting some pretty hefty numbers. And I think that's going to quickly fall on local government as well. So, you know, I don't know if we can sustain the rate of expenditure if there are other options that might be worth exploring. You know, we did this in an emergency piece, we did not go to a competitive piece. And I think, you know, it might be worthwhile to do that. I know the city just reallocated some CDBG funds and I believe, you know, had, got about 60 or 70 rooms of capacity for shelter-based stuff out of CDBG. And I think got a, you know, a per-room basis that was probably a better, probably better kind of number at the end of that equation. And, you know, I just, I am concerned about what our resources are. Not concerned about stepping up and providing the service in any way, shape, or form, but I am concerned about doing it in a way that makes sense. And, you know, I think we have a 30-day clause in here. I think we could probably put a 30-day notice in and get that deal redone. There is essentially, there's tons of hotel capacity in the city of Flagstaff right now. And so that's what I wanted to bring forward. If folks have, be interested in hearing my colleagues' perspectives on what exercising that 30-day notice might look like or if that feels like the wrong thing or the right thing. But to me, I think it's an important, it's an important piece to discuss.
Sure, and I'm sure that there's others that want to comment. And so, but I'm going to go ahead and comment first. And, you know, as you know, we're going to be bringing online with the assistance of the Army Corps of Engineers and with the National Guard and with the state, the actually, the low, the alternative care site, which will be, you know, the low-acuity care site. And so that actually may assist with this in the sense that once that comes on online, that we may not have to have a hotel because this is actually part of a continuum of care, having this hotel. And so I'd love for Marie, you know, to comment on that because yes, it is, it is costly. And I agree with you, I'm very proud of the county for doing the right thing. And maybe we'll get some relief of this cost once the other facility comes online. Marie?
Yes, thank you Chair Archileta, Supervisor Babbitt. So the comments are very well taken and understood. It certainly is an economic hit. And I also fully agree that we did the right thing at the right time. And as the alternative care site comes onboard, it will allow us an opportunity to continue to be agile, as we always are, and to pivot those services out. And so Ms. Musselman has an update on the ACS that we'll get to when it's time for the COVID-19 presentation. The other piece that I want to share is that there certainly is different hotel options now should we make the decision that we want to go forward with that. And one of the barriers to being first and doing something, and as Supervisor Babbitt acknowledged, is that we stood this up very quickly. And as I'll share in my update, that we did this, luckily, things were signed on the first day that we did have a COVID-positive test. But in part of that, we did not have other hotels at that time that were willing to take this risk, if you will, and to work with us. And so now that has changed. There are many other hotelers that have come forward and willing to be in this space. So there certainly is a lot more opportunity now to negotiate and to perhaps do a per-room, per-block basis rather than the entire hotel. So we stand ready to continue looking at those options and to negotiate and to shift focus. Thank you.
Other board members?
Yes, Liz, oh, excuse me.
Supervisor Ryan?
Excuse me, getting tongue-twisted here. Yeah, actually, these are, you know, the whole conversation's revolving around notes that I was making when we were setting it up. And my hope, A, is, well, no matter what, when we were setting it up, we saw the need, we saw the need for continuum of care. And we did it quickly, and we were there at the right time. But also, as noted tonight and noted back then, at $200,000 to $300,000 a month, this could easily eat our budget as well. And we need to be there for the whole community. And we also need to worry about what's going on from the health perspective. So it is an apropos conversation that we evaluate now that we stepped into it. It costs a lot upfront. Let's pause for a moment, take a look at how we might be able to modify the cost structure and what options may be available. So I agree with Art, with Supervisor Babbitt in terms of, you know, it could be an amendment with this group or it could be looking at other pieces, and it might be a hybrid associated with it. But I think we've reached a point where it really does make sense to do that. In the meantime, I know some of us have had conversations that replicate what Dr. Peoples was referring to, and Kim, the alternative site. And you had mentioned it also, Liz. Yes, if we could get the state to step in and take over the hotel or move this feature into the alternative site, that would be wonderful. The only piece of that is, we're not quite sure when that'll happen, how it'll happen, nor for sure what our reimbursement is. So it really does make sense that we evaluate financial models while also addressing this continuum of care component with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Go ahead Supervisor Babbitt.
Yeah, so I just, so I appreciate where we are with the landscape now. I mean, I still think, yes, we have an action about Amendment Two, or Amendment One, I can't remember what it is. It is the First Amendment, so Amendment One. And so, you know, we need to do this to help our reimbursement piece. But I do think, you know, as one, I would like us to see, to move expeditiously into the other exploration of options that, because the landscape has changed so significantly on hotel capacity and other folks. And so we went from an uncompetitive process that was rolled out with meaningful public health initiatives behind it. It's time to pivot into a more, you know, in my estimation, pretty quickly, to strike a better deal that produces the same outcome and the same ability to support vulnerable populations.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Parks.
Yeah, I kind of had some problems with this in the beginning. And it's proved to me to be very problematic on the, what Supervisor Babbitt said about, we have eight cases in 120 rooms at the fee of $190,000 plus per month. In just a few months, we could buy a hotel for that price. So I'm having a real problem with this. I think it's verging on a great waste of money. And I think, yes, we do need to renegotiate. We need to, we need to start over with this. Thank you.
Well, thank you Supervisor Parks. So I think the staff is certainly hearing the conversation. Obviously, you know, some things have changed, and so we can take a look at this. For, I don't want to, as both Supervisor Babbitt and others have mentioned, we don't want to lose sight of the fact that the county was doing the right thing and having this, and so I don't want that to be overshadowed at all. And I certainly understand that the board could make the decision to go exercise the 30-day option. I don't believe that this, at this particular time for this agenda today, I mean, obviously, we're not going to be able to do that as that's been acknowledged already. So we'll go ahead and move forward with a motion on this item. And then we will ask the staff to bring it back to us for consideration of, you know, various options, whether it be another amendment, whether it be a 30-day. You know, as we look at the landscape and as the landscape is changing on a daily basis, certainly we have an opportunity to bring this back. And so with that, is there a motion to approve the amendment to the contract with DBAD GUY LLC doing business as Hotel Aspen?
Madam Chair, I'd make that motion to approve an amendment to the contract with De Bad Guy LLC doing business as Hotel Aspen Flagstaff, located at 1,008 East Route 66, for the use of the building as a quarantine housing unit in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll second the motion. This is Matt Ryan, with an understanding that we'll be evaluating this as we proceed as well.
Yes, thank you so much. The motions are made by Supervisor Babbitt, seconded by Supervisor Ryan. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion passes 4 to 1, and Supervisor Parks voting nay. Thank you very much. And I'm just going to mention like who makes the motions and the votes so that our clerk can get those down, being that we're doing this through video and also through phone. Okay, so that leads us now to the Health District Consent Agenda. There are motion to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors.
So moved, Matt Ryan.
Bye Supervisor Babbitt.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, hearing no nays, this passed, we are now the Health District Board of Directors, and we're on item number 11. Is there a desire to have a presentation on this? Or is there a motion to approve the Health District Consent Agenda?
Supervisor Babbitt moving to approve the Health District Consent Agenda.
Supervisor Ryan seconding.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And thank you so much for saying your names when you make the motion or the second. That's very helpful, then I don't have to repeat it. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. Hearing no opposition, passes unanimously. We now need to resolve as the Library District Board of Directors. Is there a motion to do so?
Madam Chair, I'll move to resolve as the Board of Supervisors.
Second. Thank you very much. There's a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors, all in favor. Oh, it was made, that motion was made by Supervisor Ryan, seconded by Vice Chair Fowler. All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. The next item is the Library District. This is an action item, and this is, we now need to resolve as the Library District Board of Directors. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved, Supervisor Ryan.
Second, Supervisor Fowler.
All, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. Hearing no opposition, we are now, that motion passes, and we are now the Library District Board of Directors. And I would like to hand this over to Mr. Jane to tell us who will be introducing this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I can just make a quick comment regarding the item that you just passed in the Health District, I just want to officially welcome Roberta Coons to the Coconino County family. She's been a part of providing these services that you just approved, and now she's actually on our team. So I just want to officially welcome her. So thank you, Madam Chair. So now, in the Library District, Joanne Keane, DCM Keane, has been working with Sue Brown and Heidi Hansen at the city, along with Library Director Jared Tolman on this item. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Joanne to give a brief introduction, and then Sue is also on the phone, along with the County Library Director Jared Tolman, to answer, make a brief presentation and answer any questions. So, Madam Chair, if it's okay, I'll turn the time to DCM Keane.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before the Board of Directors acting as the Library District, is a consideration and possible action to approve additional spending capacity of $10,000 and a corresponding budget amendment for tenant improvements at the Tuba City Public Library. That library is located at 78 Main Street in Tuba City, Arizona. This action is on behalf of the Coconino County Library District and for a total spending capacity of $130,000 for the project. As County Manager Jane mentioned, on the phone, we have Jared Tolman, our county and city library director, Sue Brown, our facilities director, and then I would also like to recognize Heidi Hansen, our economic vitality director, who's also available if the board has any questions specific to budget. So I'd like to turn it back over to the chair.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, this is Eric. Just a reminder for the phone folks, they'll have to press star six to unmute.
Thank you very much. And Eric, do you see anybody at this particular time that wanted to say something that we haven't called on? Okay, Sue Brown. I'm going to turn it over to her. So go ahead, Sue.
Madam Chair, thank you. At this item, I think it is, hopefully, the final item we'll have from this project in Tuba City, which has been quite an extraordinary project. We've been able to do a number of things at the library. We hadn't anticipated to be able to do as much, but we're able to identify some really critical things to allow the full optimization of this wonderful resource in the Tuba City community, and urge the board's consideration of this item, and allow this final piece of spending, which is tied to a bookshelf that was, had to be made by the vendor and was ordered a bit late, so it could not be included in the last item. And I would offer to Executive Director Tolman to add any additional comments he may have about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue Brown, for that. This is Jared Tolman, Library Director for Flagstaff City in Coconino County. I do have pictures of the library and what we've been able to do. If anyone is interested in seeing those, I can send that out or present that here. But I'll second Sue's motion to encourage you to move this on. We've been able to create a really lovely space for the community to come and really utilize the resources that they need.
Thank you very much. Are there others who would like to add to this presentation? Okay, let me see if there are any questions or comments from the board, and let me ask Vice Chair Fowler if she has any comments. She is the supervisor of the district where Tuba City is located. So Vice Chair Fowler, did you have any questions or comments on this item?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to thank Sue and Jared and this Flagstaff team, City of Flagstaff, for working on this project. I saw the photos. It's just really opened up the project that had to remove a staircase, and just really looks nice in there. This is one of the most-used gathering places. It is the gathering place in Tuba City, and right now, the Wi-Fi's are on, and people be able to park outside and be able to do homework and other personal items online. So I just want to thank their patience in really working through some of these details that needed to get done. So thank you so much, and I know the community is very excited about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other supervisors with any questions? Okay, hearing none, Vice Chair Fowler, would you like to make the motion?
Oh, yes. I would like, I will move that we approve, let me get the wording here, that we approve the additional spending capacity of $10,000 and a corresponding budget adjustment for the improvement at the Tuba City Library, Public Library located in Tuba City. So thank you so much, everyone. So if you will all agree.
Great, is there a second?
Jim Parks.
Okay, seconded by...
Supervisor Parks, second.
Yes, seconded by Director Parks, and Director Parks also serves on the Library District, so thank you very much. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, this passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Is there a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved, Matt Ryan.
Supervisor Fowler, second.
Right, there's a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, passes unanimously. Now, we are acting as the Board of Supervisors, and we have a few items for discussion and possible action. We are on agenda item number 13. This is a presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve the proposed updated Coconino County Fair fees. Parks and Recreation, and I believe we have Cynthia Nemeth, who is here to present this item.
Good evening, Chair Archuleta, and members of the board. Cynthia Nemeth, Parks and Recreation Director for Coconino County. I want to recognize Ricky Conway, our Outdoor Recreation Coordinator and County Fair Manager, who was on the line with us, as well as Brian Grooby, Assistant Director. And I'd also like to acknowledge any stakeholders or public that are joining us on the meeting for this particular agenda item, and thank you for joining us. So we're here to talk about a series of county fair updates that were presented to the board on January 28th. We've gone through a 60-day public hearing period, and tonight, we're asking the board for you to consider the fees and the possible approval of them. That being said, we understand, we're very aware of how different our world is today from what it was during that July, or that January presentation. We're sensitive to the potential impact the fees will have on those affected by them. We're also sensitive to the struggling small businesses, and especially those that are reliant on special events. And though the fee updates are in most cases minimal, and in other cases, offer lower upfront costs, and especially for our food vendors, we're keenly aware of the message some will receive by us raising fees during these challenging times. For this reason, we want the board to know that staff has outlined several alternatives on how to approach this evening's action. Under normal circumstances, we believe these fees are fair and they're appropriate. So one of the alternatives we'd like to offer is to approve the fees tonight for implementation for next year's county fair. And that's assuming our economic picture has much improved than what it is today. A second alternative could be for the board to postpone the approval of this very same fee package until such time that we have a clearer picture of what our future looks like, our economic future looks like. And the truth of the matter is, is, you know, we don't know what effect COVID-19 will have on this year's county fair. Ricky and I have been crunching various attendance and profit-loss scenarios. We've detailed opportunities for reduction in our production costs of the event. We're evaluating on how to continue planning for the county fair under such uncertainty. And with Brian, we've been discussing what this year's fair could potentially look like under a variety of different scenarios. So with all of that in mind, I would like to hand over this virtual podium to Ricky Conway, who will review the public process, the fee updates that we've studied, that we've proposed, that we've vetted, and that we're bringing to you once again today after the 60-day public hearing period. And so Ricky, with that, I want to go ahead and toss it over to you to review the information that we have on our fees.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Ricky Conway. I am the Fair Manager and Program Coordinator for Coconino County Parks and Recreation. And I'm going to attempt to share a screen right now. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
We can see it just fine. Yes, we can see it, Ricky.
Wonderful, thank you so much. So I'm going to try to make this quick. A lot of this information you have seen before. It was part of our January 28th presentation. A lot of it is a recap, but here we go. Background for our fee update, we haven't adjusted fees since 2006. In that time, goods and services have risen. We wanted to align our fee schedule with best practices for the fair industry. It was an opportunity for us to try to moderately increase revenue without impacting the fair growers, which we define as our, the general public, our fair guests. We presented these fees, the proposal, to you on January 28th, at which time, more information was requested, and I hope we were able to answer those questions. Some of that will be addressed later in this presentation, at which point, after the January 28th meeting, we began our 60-day public hearing process. The process to reach out to our stakeholders, in this case, our exhibitors, went very well. We were able to communicate with them in December of 2019, again, in January of 2020, with two presentations on the topic, and informed and invited exhibitors to attend that January 28th meeting. Through our 60-day process, and throughout this entire process of updating our fees, we received five emails and no phone calls from an exhibitor. Two of the emails were asking us to bring back premiums. One of them was from the 4-H extension officer, expressing that he heard no, that everybody in the 4-H Risk Council was, were in support of the changes. One person did write in and express that there might be a financial hardship for charging entries. I did follow up with that person and explain that it was not for all entries, strictly for those open livestock, and she seemed very okay with that. That email exchange is also included in your packet. And lastly, we got a former exhibitor who said everything seemed more than fair. The vendor process was very similar, except we had a little bit more time with them. We talked to each vendor in person at the 2019 fair. We met with them during convention, both in 2018 and 2019, a lot of email communication, also invited to two presentations, as well as the 28th Board of Supervisor meeting. We got four emails back from the vendors in relation to the fee update, all of them very understanding. The first one saying that they understand, as business owners, that you need to increase prices, characters by John, fees are very reasonable, top-notch, wanted to thank us for trying to be fair to everyone, and Cutco is excited about coming back. And those, that was the feedback we got from our stakeholders regarding this update process. And in fact, yesterday, when I sent a reminder, an email to tell everybody about tonight's meeting, I believe I got three emails back from vendors, all of them asking when the vendor application will be available. I'll do a real quick recap of what the fees are that we are proposing, because it has been a while. We are proposing to raise our open poultry, rabbit, and cave-in fee from $0.50 to $1 per entry, which would go to offset some of the hard costs involved in offering that department at the county fair. Open horse would increase from $3 to $5, again, to offset some costs with the horse show that happens the weekend before the county fair. And the 4-H wristbands, which are good for parking and admission for all four days of the fair, would go up $20 to $25 for adults, and 12, from 12 to 15 for the children. And here that information is in a table format, which is what you were presented with back in January. As you can see, all other entries would remain at $0. So if you want to enter a jam, $0, flowers, $0. The only thing we are trying to do is cover some costs associated with some of those other entry areas. All of that, and this data was put together pre-COVID-19, and so this is based on everything being the same from 2019 to 2020, which we know it won't be. But when we presented this information in January, we were projecting a $534 increase in revenue tied to adjusting the fees for those entries and 4-H wristbands. The vendors is a little bit more complicated. I'll try to take a little bit more time with this one. Food vendors is the biggest piece of this. In this model, food vendors would go from a square footage fee to a minimum guarantee based on the frontage, which would be applied against a percentage of, against a percentage of their gross revenue. I butchered that, but I'll get it better later. The amusement vendors would change from a percentage to a square foot. Commercial and nonprofit would just see a nominal increase, and we would ask for a refundable deposit. But the full spreadsheet is available in your agenda packet. As you can see on this table, the indoor commercial vendors would see an increase from $450 to $500 for a 10-by-10. A corner space would go from $500 to $550, and anything additional, any additional 10-by-10 spaces would go from $250 to $300. A common thread among all this is that we are also including your first electrical hookup free. So while fees are going up, we are trying to add value with, including that first electrical hookup, which many vendors only need one, and so it would be a savings for them. Nonprofit and early bird vendors would see an increase from $1.50 a square foot to $2. More than 401 square feet would go from $0.75 to $1. Our outdoor vendors, we have two different pricing models. One is for our standard space, and the other is for the midway or the premium space. For our standard outdoor vendors, it would go from $3 to $3.50 for more than 401 square feet, from $1.25 to $1.75. The midway or premium outdoor vendors would see an increase from $4 to $4.50 a square foot, and then $1.25 to $2.25 per square foot for more than 401 square feet. Amusement vendors are, have historically been assessed 15% of their gross revenue. We are looking at moving them to a per-square-foot alignment, which is similar to our other outdoor vendors. The biggest reason for this is that we have found through the years that a lot of the amusement vendors don't have the resources, namely staff and the point-of-sale equipment, to accurately provide us with their Z-tapes, unlike food vendors, which are, which do have that machinery and the staff available. But, so amusement vendors would be switching from a 15% gross revenue to a $2.50 per square foot for up to 200 square feet, and then an additional quarter per square foot above that. And the reason it's so low for them is that a lot of those amusement vendors have large footprints, and we wanted to be mindful that, you know, they shouldn't, just because they have a bigger footprint, doesn't mean they should be necessarily be charged a... a much, much higher rate than what they have been paying at their 15%. The food vendors is the tricky one. What we're trying to do here is share in success, create a partnership with our food vendors. Historically, they have been charged $4 per square foot, which allows us to sell space, but really doesn't create that connection that we're looking for with our food vendors. And again, changing to this model would put us more in line with other Arizona fairs. In this model, food vendors would be charged a minimum guarantee against 18% of their gross revenue. I'm going to give a quick example. So if I'm a food vendor and my frontage or my selling side is 10 feet or fewer, I pay $500 with my contract. I then turn in daily Z-tapes at the front office, and on Monday, we look at the Z-tapes, and I have made $1,000. So what we do is we deduct the $500 that was already paid, and then we apply 18% to the balance. So on that, the 18% would be applied to $500 for a total of $90 additional dollars to the fair. What this does is it protects vendors against a down year, which 2020 could very well be. It also allows the fair to create more incentives, for example, getting people more admission incentives, maybe a promotion up at the gate that we would then hopefully get on the percentages from the food, and we already get percentages from alcohol and carnival. And so this would be another avenue for us to create a revenue share with our fair partners. Other miscellaneous fees, we have fees à la carte. I mentioned earlier that your first electrical is free, but then there are additional fees if you need more than just that one. For a 110 would go from $17 to $25, for a 220, $35 to $50. Access to water for a lot of food vendors and some amusements would go from $20 to $25. Ice, we do sell ice at the county fair. For $4 a bag, we'd raise that to $5. And although it does say to be determined for the credit card processing fees, since then, I do know it's $0.25 plus 3.5992% per transaction, which is just the rate that we get charged from our vendor for which we transact. The other component of this are the vendor deposits. Currently, we have a $100 nonrefundable, and it's not really a deposit. It more or less holds your space if you're a vendor, and it goes to your final balance. And what we're proposing is a refundable deposit, which would be $250 for commercial vendors and $100 for nonprofits. That would be refundable, as long as there are no damages or violations to the contract, which can include damage to the facility, obviously, for food vendors missing a reconciliation window, leaving early, coming in late after our check-in window, which then has extra burden on staff time. And so there would be a way for the fair to protect itself from that, as well as if a vendor were to back out at the last second. We've planned for their space. We're ready for them to be here. At least we would be able to have something to protect us from that as well. With that, there is a cancellation policy that is in line with other Parks and Recreation cancellation policies. So for all of that, and again, these numbers were based on pre-COVID-19, where we were figuring 2020 would look very similar to 2019. But in that, we were projecting for all of those changes to receive an additional $27,409 in revenue. A bulk of that is coming from food, which is, they will pay less upfront, food vendors will. But when trying to compute this, we talked with one of our other Arizona fairs, the Verde Valley Fair, who told us approximately how much they receive in gross revenue from their food vendors, because they're on percentages, and we were able to then tabulate or calculate what it would be potentially for us on a normal year. So all of that to say about $27,400. This was one of the items that we talked about, I believe, at the January 28th meeting, is what do other fairs do? And this was something I know I spoke with at least one or two board supervisors about in that 60-day period. There's a larger table in your packet. These are the ones that are comparable to us in size by the 2017 attendance numbers, which were the best ones available. As you can see, for a fair of our size, a percentage against a minimum guarantee is And with that, I will turn it over to any questions and discussion.
All right. Thank you very much. Cynthia, did you have anything you wanted to add to the presentation before I turn it over to questions and discussion and possible action?
Chair, Chairperson Archileta, no, I don't have anything else to add. Ricky pretty much covered the fees that we're proposing and the comments that we've gotten from our constituents or stakeholders, I should say, and then just the process, the very thorough process that he went through to get to where we are today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just a reminder to folks, if you would please mute your phones unless you have a question, and that will just help us with some of the background noise. We're all learning together, so thank you for doing that. All right, thank you. Well, let me open it up to the board to see if they have any questions or comments. Board members?
Madam Chair, this is...
Go back to Brian.
Yeah, actually, first and foremost, I appreciate all the work that Parks and Rec staff has done with this, their outreach to the various vendors, a presentation that we had in the past. I think it's a fair question to ask whether we consider any modifications at this point. Even so, we are, you know, having it as fees. Aren't we posted for a hearing as well? And if so, it might be worth just providing that opportunity. I'm not seeing it listed as a hearing, but, you know, usually we do that even so.
Let me go ahead and turn it over to other board members, and certainly I'd be happy to open this up for public comment if any member of the public would like to make a comment. But let's see, are there other board members that have any questions or comments at this Okay, hearing none. If there is any member of the public that's on this meeting, that's joined this meeting and would like to ask a question or make a comment, you're welcome to do so. And Eric, would you please remind members of the public how to signal if they have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For all those who are on the Teams app, you can simply unmute, since we're in public comment. If you are on the phone, please press star six to unmute your phone.
Okay, we'll give people just a few seconds here to see if there's anybody who would like to ask a question or make a comment. Okay, well, not hearing any member of the public that would like to make a comment, then I'll go ahead and bring this back to the board for possible action. And my understanding is that what is before us this evening is to adopt the proposed fees, but there's also a discussion about perhaps delaying the implementation of those fees. And Cynthia, why don't you just confirm that that is done?
Chair, members of the board, yes, I'd be happy to go over that. So as we see it, I mean, we feel again that the fees are fair and they're appropriate, but we understand our new circumstances. So we're offering a couple of alternatives, one being to approve the fees as they are today, but with a delayed implementation, and we would implement those next year, at next year's county fair, for next year's county fair, and that's, you know, hoping for an improved economic reality at that time. A second alternative would be for the board to postpone this entire package and revisit this same fee packet at another time when we have a clearer picture of what's before us. And I suppose, of course, there's always the alternative to abandon the fee approval and the package altogether. But our recommendation would be for you first to at least consider the first two alternatives that I presented.
Members of the board, the recommendation is to go for one of the first two proposals that are presented, and so what is the discussion around that?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Babett?
So thank you. I would be... I appreciate having the options put forward, but I would also be very interested in what, you know, Ricky heard from folks around this and what Parks and Recs think is the right path forward, whether that is to adopt... I am happy adopting tonight. It's a question of do we adopt a delay implementation or adopt an implement? And so I would, you know, personally, I'd like to hear what the recommendation is from Parks and Rec on that.
Okay, super. So Cynthia, if you can make that recommendation, or I can also turn it over to County Manager Jane. I'm sure that both you and Deputy County Manager Andriani, as well as County Manager Jane, have had a discussion about that. Whoever would like to take that, I'd welcome that at this time.
I'm happy to take that. I mean, I think, you know, Chair Archileta, members of the board, staff is very sensitive to the climate. We're very sensitive to what's going on today, and our recommendation would be to approve the fee packet as it is presented today, but with a delayed implementation, and delaying that implementation until next year.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. Appreciate it very much. Is there a motion to do so?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Ryan?
I'd like to make the motion, but I'd like to make the motion to that... Well, let me go ahead and make the motion to approve the proposed county fair fees update pursuant to ARS 11-25124 and ARS 11-935, and to delay implementation of the fees, and I'm going to suggest this in my motion, to revisit next year on the determination of, one year from now, the determination of when to implement the fees.
So therefore, there would be a... Yes, I understand that. Is there a second, and then we can engage in discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Supervisor Parks. I would like to second that with the understanding that we may not even have a fair this year, and therefore it might be very necessary to do as Supervisor Ryan had indicated.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Parks. Go ahead, Supervisor Ryan. I think you wanted to add in terms of discussion to that, the intent of your motion.
So just further discussion, Madam Chair, is that we don't know how long this is going. If we took an action to implement one year from now, we may still be in a similar circumstance. So we're approving the fees, but we're sending it to a future date for the structure of the fees, but a future date to make the determination of when to implement, and that's one year from now.
Great. Well, thank you. I think that is wise, and I appreciate the recommendation from staff. Any other comments from the board before we take a vote?
I just want to... This is Supervisor Fowler. I just want to recognize the work that our staff and the... It's been... They've been working on it for a while, so I just want to recognize their work. Thank you so much. I think it's well done, looking at even the state and seeing how others have set their county fairs. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Supervisor Fowler. I agree, and I appreciate the meeting to go over the proposed fees and to speak about it a little bit further that I had with staff. And so they definitely have taken a lot of time to make sure that they're thorough and provide clarity, and so I definitely appreciate that. Okay, hearing no further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, it passes unanimously. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisors, and have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night, too. We're now on item number 14. This is the presentation and discussion with Coconial County Emergency Management and Regional Partners regarding preparation for the upcoming fire season. Hard to believe that that is already going to be upon us, and this will be presented by emergency management. I am going to turn it over to Deputy County Manager Andriani to make some introductory comments.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Yes, we're here to talk about fire season, which is approaching, and as Supervisor Babett mentioned earlier in another item, we continue and must be diligent relative to both fire and flood seasons that are approaching. And as I've said, you know, we can't trade off one disaster for another. And so tonight, we're bringing forward a number of representatives from the National Forest, as well as others, to speak to the upcoming fire season, including information from the National Weather Service that I think will be really informative, as most probably remember, we didn't have a monsoon season last year, and it certainly... We'll hear from Brian Klemowski from the Weather Service, but it certainly didn't feel like we had as much snow or rain this winter as well. So we do know that fire season is approaching already. One of the things that I wanted to share as we go into what will inevitably be discussions about fire restrictions, that a lot of different options are being looked at. I think you'll hear about this from the two forests this evening in terms of what those restrictions may look like this year. COVID is affecting their perspectives on how they'll respond to fires, and therefore the restrictions may reflect that, is what we understand, and they'll articulate that further in their presentations. But I want you to be aware that that may require us to be a little... Take a little different approach this year relative to how the board puts into place fire restrictions. As you know, we do have an ordinance, and that ordinance typically mirrors the various stages that are put into place by the National Forest Service or the U.S. Forest Service and for the National Forest. If they make exemptions or modifications to those in discussions with Deputy County Attorney Rose Winkler, it may require that we do the process this year through a proclamation rather than just invoking kind of the standard ordinance. As you well know, to change an ordinance takes quite a process. We have to go through a public period, multiple days, you know, use typically 30 or 60 days. And obviously, if we have a rapidly approaching fire season, we're not going to be able to do that. So most likely, we'll use a proclamation process this year. So just wanted to give you some understanding of that as we potentially move into that discussion, which we understand could happen fairly soon, even within the next week or two weeks. So anyway, with that, I want to go ahead and turn it over to Todd Whitney, our Emergency Manager, who will guide us through the work session this evening. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Thank you, Todd. Welcome and go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm excited to present to you this evening several of my colleagues who have been preparing for the last several months in light of COVID-19 and how the response to wildfire will be changed in 2020. Just want to note that all fire districts and fire departments were invited to this presentation, and I did see several of them. presentation, and I did see several of those chime in throughout the presentation this evening. Before I begin, I would like to introduce Wes Deason. After three rounds of Assistant Director posting, we were able to secure Wes Deason from, formerly with AZ DEMA. He brings a wealth of experience from DEMA, as well as the State Attorney's Office, and some other time in that place called Tucson, that has that other university. So with that, the lineup tonight will be Brian Klemowski, followed by Art Gonzalez, James Pettit from the Coconino, Rick Miller, who's now with State Forestry, followed by Brett Axelund, Burke Clinton from the Red Cross, Janet Dean from APS, and myself and Mark Gayler from the Flagstaff Fire Department will close it out. So without further ado, Brian, are you ready?
Hello, this is Brian. Can you hear me?
Brian, we can hear you, yes, very well. And first of all, let me just welcome you, and let me say thanks to the impressive lineup that we have tonight, who will be presenting and preparing us to, for fire season, to get started in those preparations. So welcome.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair and members, it's that time of year again, and with everything that's going on, it's difficult to think that we are going to be entering into fire season soon. Like we say, we always have a fire season. It's really not a question, really, what we have to think about, and the real questions we have is, when is our fire season going to start, and how long will it last? Last year, we were very fortunate with the weather, at least, in delaying the start of the fire season until really end of June. But then, of course, we didn't have a monsoon. So the fire season, while it started late last year, lasted well into July, unfortunately. So we're just going to take a couple minutes and chat about what we're looking at this year. I'm not sure if you can see the slides, or have the slides in your packet, but just a couple key points. We actually had a pretty decent winter, as far as our precipitation in northern Arizona. Near normal for the winter, liquid and melted snow. Where we lacked was in our snow. We only had about 60% of the snow that we normally get during a typical Flagstaff winter. We have a couple weeks left that we could accumulate a little bit more, but it's not going to have that much impact if it falls. So actually, due to the rains and the snow we had this winter, it has relieved the drought that was brought on by the very dry monsoon we had, and dry fall. So that is a little bit of good news. When we have near normal or even wet springs, we actually had a pretty wet spring with March being far above normal precipitation, it tends to grow those fine fuels at the lower elevations, which can elevate the fire threat a little bit, once our fuels ripen a little Let's just go on a little bit to our precipitation and temperature outlooks. As we study the current weather pattern we have, and as we try to extrapolate that into the future, the rest of April and into May looks near normal precipitation, and temperatures are actually going to start warming a little bit, but still looking near normal. We anticipate that we're going to roll into our dry season pretty much as we would expect in an average year. We don't see any excessive precipitation on the way. We really don't see a drying and excessively hot period on tap. If we look out for the next three critical months, April, May, and June, our fire season is so often defined by what happens in May and June. Last year, we were very lucky and had a very wet May. I'm not sure we can count on that this year. When we look at the Climate Prediction Center outlooks for that three-month period, April, May, and June, or I should say what's left of April, and then May and June, it's steering us toward near normal precipitation for Coconino County, but above normal temperatures. What does this mean? Is it, given the near normal state we are in right now, as far as moisture, ground moisture, fuel moisture, it's looking to be a pretty typical fire season for us? And if we look at the significant wildfire potential outlooks that are a part of the packet, you'll see that those don't trend either above or below normal for Coconino County. There is an enhanced risk identified in May in the lower elevations to our south, but for Coconino County, largely normal wildland fire potential for April and May, and then continuing through June and July. Right now, we don't have any signals that would point us toward a late onset of the monsoon again, or an early onset. So we're going to be watching very closely to how the precipitation falls, especially later on here in April and in May. And like I think I said last year, precipitation that we get in May does a great job of like pushing off the fire season another week. If we get a half inch of moisture some week in May, that just pushes it off even farther, and that's always good news. But if we don't get any additional moisture between now and then when the temperatures really start heating up in May, we could ramp right up into a fire season, you know, by mid-May, by late May. But again, it's all dependent on the moisture that falls. Right now, current guidance, current outlooks are for a near normal fire season. That means really ramping up in late May and into June, and no indication on an early or late onset to our monsoon. And with that, I'll go ahead and stop and take any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Really appreciate the update. We always look forward to it. Let me ask if there are any questions from Board Members? Board Members, do you have any questions to ask Brian? Okay, hearing none. And if you intended to ask a question, then you just need to unmute yourself. Are there any, are there any questions from any of those who are joining the line, who might have a question for Brian? All right. Well, thank you very much, Brian. We appreciate you joining us tonight, and we'll take all of this information and begin to develop some action plans. And so, thank you. And we'll, I know that you'll keep us updated as the season continues. Okay, let's go to Mr. Whitney, if you'll please introduce the next presenter.
Yes, is Art Gonzalez ready? Kiabab National Forest.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so I'm ready. So, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board, and other guests on the call. My name's Arthur Gonzalez. I'm the Fire Staff Officer for the Kiabab National Forest, and together with my partner on the Coconino, we're going to cover a few key items regarding, you know, the upcoming fire season on National Forest across the Coconino County. So it was nice going after Brian. He really set the stage well for us. Key things is the moisture really dictates our fire season for Coconino County. Lower elevation, we grow a lot of grass with moisture, and then that spring moisture starts to dictate when we see that intense drying from May and June into the fire season. So we're looking good to be at an average or below average fire season, but I want to remind members of the board, this is not business as usual. So given the world that we are currently living in with the COVID-19 concerns, we are altering some of the things that we are doing. And so one of the key ones that was mentioned earlier was restrictions, so I'd really like to focus on that. So typically, we use a lot of our environmental conditions as one of the key elements, and we'll continue to monitor that. But what we're looking at this year is COVID-19 risk management efforts that we are trying to put in place are increasing the complexity of an already complex fire management program. So using some key risk management principles, we're trying to align our strategies and tactics with our agency missions and goals. One of those things that we're discussing is the implementation of a campfire ban earlier in the season than maybe environmental conditions would dictate. So key, key things around that is, so we would be looking at going in early with the campfire ban, and then as other conditions start to catch up, and we start to reach other criteria, we may look at additional restrictions and potentially those area closures that we do on some of those years, where we start to see that very high extreme fire danger. So we'll look to continue that. And just as a reminder, in our neck of the woods, in those less than extreme environmental years, we tend to see a reduced public compliance with extinguishing campfires. I think we build up this sense of comfort that it's wet, I drove out, it was muddy, I don't need to put my fire out. So it's one of the reasons that we're looking at, you know, some earlier restrictions. And the intent of that is to reduce the exposure to the extent possible, to the extent possible to our responders and to the public. And so how would we do that? So one of the key things is our initial attack. So when we first get that initial call and we respond, it's a complex world to begin with. When we're trying to evaluate impacts through the partners and public, we're looking at values at risk to try to determine some strategies and tactics on any given fire. Well, this year, now we got to incorporate risk management or risk mitigation efforts around COVID-19. So even on the smallest fire, we are going to see increased complexity. So we'd like to try to reduce the number of times that we have to send those folks out the door to go respond to a fire. Another key thing that I was hoping to show, but I don't have access, was a picture of a typical camp, a fire camp. You pack hundreds of folks together in small communities, it's hard to imagine on a year like this, when we are really cognizant of social distancing and all the other mitigation efforts we're trying to put in place. So one of the other intents in having these campfire bans is they're trying to reduce the potential for those long-duration incidents, large incidents, that require a larger workforce. So we've seen some recent studies from public health specialists with modeling expertise in these epidemics, and what we're seeing is, if we continue as business as usual on a single given incident, large duration or long-duration, large event, we could potentially see infections and mortality rates in our responders higher on any one single incident than we see over the course of several fire seasons. And that's really tied to the inability to distance folks, to clean and disinfect behind hundreds of folks. And then those camps are often set up in smaller communities. So one of the intent around fire restrictions is to try to reduce to the extent possible that need for those initial attack and those potential long-term, larger, complex events, where we have to bring in people from around the country. One of the other elements that we're looking at is trying to reduce smoke exposure to the public in our areas. So we know COVID-19 is a respiratory illness, and we know that smoke can compromise respiratory systems and immune systems. And so by reducing the potential for fires, what we're trying to do is reduce the smoke potential on our communities, on our responders, so that that's one less thing to have to worry about amongst all the things that we're dealing with right now. And then specifically for our firefighters, smoke exposure, COVID response, the stress and fatigue alone is going to wear their systems down, and we think that that could potentially exacerbate infection numbers or potential spread. So some of the key things we're looking at and trying to implement, earlier restrictions and things that we'll be paying attention to. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to James Pettit on the Coconino, and he'll cover other aspects for the Two Forests.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Pettit. Thank you for being here tonight as well, and we look forward to your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I just want to thank, say thanks for sharing your time this evening. You know, right out of the gate, I think Art said it well, this is not business as usual, as we all know. And so I'm going to tag on to a lot of what Art just talked about. Try not to be redundant here, but you know, most of what I'm going to cover is capacity issues that we might have moving into this year with COVID and our fire response. So I'll start out talking a little bit about the chief's letter. And so, little precept of that was, above all, our focus during this fire year will be on sustaining life, on protecting the health and safety of our employees and American people we serve as we carry out the core wildfire mission responsibilities. And with that letter, she's outlined some objectives for this year. And as you'll notice, as I read through some of them, they're, you know, they're very responsive to the issues we've got going on today, you know, namely COVID. So some of the ones that really stick out, minimize to the extent feasible COVID-19 exposure and transmission, and smoke exposure to firefighters and communities. Prioritize the use of local suppression resources with the predominant strategy of being rapid containment. Commit resources only when there is a reasonable expectation of success in protecting life and critical property and infrastructure. Develop methods for broad information sharing, given changed conditions. Use the skills of the entire agency workforce to play a role this fire year. And encourage innovation and use of doctrine for local adaptions. So what we're doing here locally to respond to this is, obviously, you know, we're taking the approach of a full suppression strategy on all of our human and lightning ignitions. Now, this doesn't necessarily mean indirect strategies won't be used. Oftentimes, we'll get a fire out on the landscape, and what a direct strategy might mean to somebody is, we go out there and get the folks out there and chink line around it. Well, oftentimes, you know, given terrain and conditions, you might have to back out to a road system and burn it out. So there'll be, there'll be strategies used, but it will be a full suppression strategy with our goal of limiting fires to the smallest possible size, containing them as fast as we can. But we really want to look at it more of, you know, in terms of efficiency and effectiveness. So trying to use those strategies to do that. Obviously, as you all know, prescribed burning is paused indefinitely within the region. So none of that will take place this spring. One of the, one of the other things that takes us back to part of the objectives from the chief there is, we're trying to manage resources across boundaries. And so the way we want to look at it this year is, you know, it's a coalition of resources. And so the federal agencies here up in northern Arizona, the Coconino, the Kiabab, the Prescott, the Grand Canyon National Park, we're looking at those resources as one big bucket instead of four separate agencies and resources. And what that does for us is, is it allows us some capacity in case, you know, we have some of our resources that go down for whatever, whatever reason. We know there are going to be times when we may need to quarantine some resources at one point. Oftentimes, these folks that work on these, on these engines or hotshot crews, it's a very tight-knit group, and the social distancing on fire lines is very difficult to implement. You know, if one person contaminates, gets infected, it's going to contaminate that whole crew. And so we know there's going to be a chance that we'll have to quarantine that whole resource, and by having that larger bucket of resources available to us, we'll be able to shift those resources to where that need is for any given day. You know, part, part of this is just knowing that we're not in this alone, and we're going to need all of our partners and cooperators to help us get through this fire season. And we'll continue to support all of them, you know, the BIA, Navajo, Hopi, Walupis, our PFAT group, as well as Flagstaff and Verde Monuments, the National Park Monuments, and the Grand Canyon National Park. We'll have the same complement of resources that we always have had. We're in the process right now of onboarding those resources, so we expect that the So we expect that they'll be up and ready for fire season along the Coconino, Kaibab, the Prescott and the Park Service. We've got, we've got 30 engines, four hotshot crews, three dozers, and four type three helicopters. And so we've got a really good contingent of resources here kegged up in Northern Arizona. Part of the other things that we're doing here is we'll be operating at, at what we call elevated planning and drawdown levels. And, and what that means for us is as, as fire activity increases and fire severity increases, we up those planning levels as, and in parallel up our drawdown levels. What those drawdown levels do is, is it helps us manage how many resources we have on hand on any, any given day. So we know that we're going to get fires down south and we'll have, we'll, we'll need to help our neighbors down south, but we don't want to send off all of our resources. So those drawdown levels help gauge that. Well, what we're going to do this year that, that's different from other years is elevate those, those drawdown levels. So normally for given conditions and activity level going across the southwest, we might be at a, at a drawdown level of, say, for example, two. And, and what that would do is say, it would require that we keep five engines on the forest here on the Coconino. While by elevating that, that drawdown level, we'll actually keep maybe six or seven, just in case we have, we have some folks that we need to quarantine and we have to set an engine down, we'll have some, some resources on the bench, so to speak. Expect diminished capacity nationwide, you know, especially fire departments, paramedics and ambulances. We, we rely on those heavy, especially in our large fire support and our incident management teams. Those folks have a, have a lot of work to do at their various home units and, and they're already telling us that, you know, their capacity to go help on large fire support is probably not going to be there this year. So we're, we're, we're looking at that heavily. Across the nation, we'll, we'll have the same complement of resources that we always do in the, in the federal agencies, you know, 113 hotshot crews, 900 engines, 20 large air tankers. All of that should be in place, but like I said, they will be at diminished capacity as well. So we can't look at those numbers as being the whole. And then, you know, with the IMTs or the incident management teams directly, expect a different kind of configuration that would you normally see at an incident management team. We're trying to do, do all of this virtually, stand up a virtual program. Hasn't been tried before, but there's a lot of aspects of those teams that will, will try to do all of this virtually and, and with, with some technology. So it's going to be a learning experience for everybody. And like I said, Art said it best, this is not business as usual. It's, we're learning as we go, but we're relying on our partners and cooperators to help us through this. So that's what I've got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and ask if there's, if there are any questions for you right now so that we can, we can make sure that we get those out. So any board members who have questions?
Liz, if I may.
Yes, Supervisor Ryan?
So James and, and Art, you know, it, it is the question of, one of those questions that we need to look at to, as a broader region and look from the private lands as well. If you are going into banning campfires, you know, I, we've had expressions of interest of doing it sooner than later across the forest. And so I'm, I'm curious if, where that conversation has progressed to because we, we see the same threat. We understand, as you explained, James and, and Art did, you know, associated with the cluster camps and other pieces. There, if your resources could easily be tapped if we permit, if you permitted campfires on the forest and in the meantime, from a community perspective, while we know people are cooped up, while they're sheltering in place, you know, we might want to enable them to maybe have an on off switch to barbecue. But I'm curious on, on where your conversations went with that.
Yeah, let me, let me just do a quick check to see if Heather, if she has connectivity.
Yes, good evening Supervisor Ryan, I'd be happy to answer that. The state of New Mexico, which is also in our region is, they're going to enter campfire restrictions tomorrow. However, in the state of Arizona, we're still talking with our state partners and at the highest level, our regional forester is. And at this point, we're not in complete alignment. So she's working through that and we'll see how those discussions go.
Well, just to express it, I see the virtue in the recommendation as we talked about it, I think a week or two ago. If you proceed, I, I would say tonight, I'd be willing to support you in that effort. And, you know, I, I understand there's a desire. A lot of people are not sure what the best direction is to go and there's a desire to, to get people out there, which we support the intent of exercise that type of concept, but when it can take out our natural resources in the area, you know, I would say we would support you in that effort. You know, I would let my colleagues weigh in on that, but I'm certainly there on the idea of banning campfires. And in the meantime, while you go through these discussions, we still have an interest of, maybe you potentially could keep the, if we have forest management activities occurring out there, that they would proceed. We'd also be interested for the sake of our communities. There are a lot of them are sitting idle at home while they're sheltering in place, the ability to still social distance, but bring green waste out to some of the green waste sites out there.
Thank you.
Those are all great.
Oh, go ahead.
Excuse me.
No, no, no.
Thank you. Excuse me, Madam Chair. Technology. Thank you for that Supervisor Ryan. We are looking at restrictions that would still allow for our industrial partners or loggers and that kind of forestry work that goes on to continue. And that would continue until the indices that Art referred to are hit, where the forest just gets too dry for that. So we are looking at that. I just want to emphasize that well over 99% of our national forest lands in Arizona are open for recreation, dispersed recreation. We primarily shut down our, as you all know, our developed sites that we just can't keep up with the numbers of people, cleaning supplies and that kind of thing. And then finally, really appreciate your support. We need it. When it comes to restrictions, I'm with you. We had our first fire last week, 15 acres, and it happened to break on a day when we had a hype, we had a potential COVID case in our office that shut down dispatch and it was all too real about how difficult it's going to be to respond to fires this year. So we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Supervisor Ryan, did you have a follow up?
Actually, I'm reciprocating on, I understand not only did you have that fire, but you, both of them out in the parks area on the Kaibab, you had two fires more recently. And, and so yes, it will put a demand on your resources. So we, we definitely want to be aware of that and, and see if we, how we might be able to work together and assist with that. You know, I would defer to the other board members though, Liz.
Sure, absolutely. Other board members, do you have any questions at this time?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Babbitt.
Yeah, so first of all, Art and James, appreciate it and, and other folks who are here. Yeah, so I, I agree. I think this is a time to kind of move on the campfire side of things. I do appreciate the comments that, that we'll have to get with Todd Whitney on as well related to private parcels. I think that's almost equally where the rub is going to be this year. And then, so I'm conceptually aligned. I do think we should not have, I think it should be an igniter driven piece, at least on the private lands. And I just wanted to Heather, just really quickly, so did I hear you say you shut down dispatch? And if I heard that correctly, dispatch is the one who actually gives the coordinates to, your dispatch is what actually gives coordinates to suppression, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Go ahead, Art.
Yeah, so the, the potential exposure, what happened is we had some employees there that were potentially exposed. And under our USDA playbook, we had to consider the whole facility as potential exposure. So yeah, we had to shut down dispatch. That's our primary communication link with those folks on the field. So we were in the midst of trying to shut that down and trying to send resources to this fire in the urban interface. You know, they had a pretty good column as a windy, you know, windy day that day. So what we had to do is put our COOP plan, our continuation of operations plan, that forces us to reach out to the Prescott Dispatch Center, to the Flagstaff Dispatch Center, and then also even to the Color Country on the northern part of you guys' county up there. Their backup plans, they are not the best of plans, but we have to make do with those plans. And so that forces, just brings on this whole level of complexity in communications. A lot of our incidents on these wildland fires where we see fatalities or entrapments all tie into communications. So when that dispatch center goes down, that is our key link with our fire folks. To the extent possible, we want to reduce the amount of times we have to send those folks out the door because of potentials like this. And so now it's got our region thinking, what if Flagstaff and Williams goes down at the same time? How do we manage that? So just one of the key things that is going to add complexity. So yeah, Mr. Babbitt, that, that's key. That's the folks that are talking to, those folks on the fire, telling them where it's at, communicating with everybody else. I get that information from dispatch. I relay that to Mr. Whitney who shares that with you all. That complicates the entire communication chain.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't want to try and enter places we don't need to go tonight, but at some point we need to ask ourselves, the reality is, is people are getting put into very difficult situations. Is shutting down dispatch, I, I mean, is there a discussion to have with emergency managers and incident commanders of something that is, is less than shutting down dispatch? I mean, that just is, I, I appreciate how we want to err on caution, but I also, you know, the notion of, is the cure better or worse than the, the illness? And so it's, I don't really want to squirrel, you know, play squirrel on this tonight, but I think it's something worthwhile. I would like the board to, you know, is there some actions the board can take to, to help encourage the region, if this is coming out of the region or the national, to have some redundancy in there? Shutting down dispatch in the middle of a fire season is, as you can imagine, from your side of the street as well as ours, is a pretty, it's a proposition I just almost can't even contemplate, to be honest with you. And I, and I know you're not advocating for it, don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to say, how do we, how do we right size this with redundancy?
Yeah, and if, if there's a fortunate side of this is it was early in the season, so we had, we had an opportunity to test that. One of the complexities, and not to get in all the details, is Williams covers Coconino, Kaibab, Grand Canyon National Park, Truxton Canyon. And so that's, that's a large area. So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely keep Mr. Whitney in, in, in part of our discussions and maybe we talk through some other form of alternative communication if we have that potential shutdown of any dispatch center.
Thanks, Art.
Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, if I can bring Rick Miller into the conversation?
This? Yes, I actually think this Vice Chair Fowler has a question, so hold on one second. Vice Chair Fowler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for the work that they are all doing. And I just can't believe the complexity of the situation that you're all in. Just to talk about a new world that we're in, just the, this social distancing and how are you going to get that done? And then how do we, how do we get this out to the, the general public about, we, every year we try to do an education about how, how to be, you know, put out your, your fire and all these precautions. And somehow we miss the people that start these fires. And I'm just thinking about just the, maybe the community education that we all need to take on again, and how do we do that? It's just so complex. I just, I just have to feel for you and the job that you're doing and trying to do and trying to keep public safety and at the same time, trying to keep your employees safe. And we're all facing that challenge right now. But if there is a fire, that it's just going to be, yes, I can only imagine how you, how that will be handled. It's just, I, I don't have any, it's just a comment that I'm just really have to see. I'm just listening to how the complexity this has brought on, additional layers and layers on, on what you already do. And I, I think putting a, a fire restriction in early, it may be something to really carry a message to the public. What are some of the actions we need to do to tell the public, this is serious business? This is what we have to do to protect the lands and them? So I, I think that's worth considering. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Fowler. Others?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Kirk. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, boy, I want to echo the thank yous from everybody else that you, you folks have really stepped up. You know, we are in a new world. We are in a new reality now. And I do believe that the people of this country, we hear the, the phrase all the time, we're all in this together. And we are. And this is bigger than COVID-19. As, as you have indicated just now, this, this extends to, into all, all corners of our lives. And one of the corners of our life is our national forests and our national parks. Now, we shut down the national parks for social distancing with dispersed camping and dispersed recreational opportunities in the national forest for the, for the folks to get out there and, and actually have the maximum social distancing possible as they recreate out there. They can, if they, if they take their car and drive out a mile past where everybody else is for the last car they saw and get out and do their, do their hike there or do their bike riding there, take their dog for a walk, get the family out there, absorb some vitamin D from the sun. That's all important stuff and that's all things that I know that you all are thinking about all the time. You don't want to take the freedom away from, from folks that have been cooped up in their home or their apartment or their, or their place of work, which would be their home because they're working from home. We've seen an incidence in, in an uptick in, in domestic violence because of this staying at home. And, and what, what we have in, in the forest is a chance to get out there and let our hair down a little bit. So we cut down. down a little bit. So we cut down, cut down on, clamp down on, on campfires. I don't think anybody would mind that, as long as they would get out, be able to get out there and recreate until such time as the woods get too dry, to where they would not be able to, to physically get out there and, and enjoy themselves without worrying about a possible fire. We all know that the months of May and June are the driest months, and that's going to, that's going to work its way into July, which last July, we, we had a very dry monsoon. It, we had a pretty bad fire up in the peaks, but it did, the, the lack of a monsoon saved us from the floods. So this is all very complicated, as Supervisor Fowler said, very complicated. I don't envy you, you folks having to figure out how to, how to get through this and around this. But I, I do support your decisions, and I do support your recommendations. And I'm glad that you're not going to close the forest right away, and I hope that we don't have to close it at all. I hope we get plenty of rain. So God bless you all, and, and I guess that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. So I think, I'm going to turn it back over to Todd, Whitney. I think we have two more presenters, correct, Todd?
That's correct, ma'am. If I could ask Rick Miller if he has anything from the State Forestry and Fire Management to add to the conversation?
And just to remind you to unmute, because we can't hear you.
How about now?
Yes, we can hear you. We can really hear you. You have a bit of an echo, but just go ahead and try it again, and let's see if that echo is, is gone. It's okay, I think, I think it'll be fine. Go ahead and start talking again. I think it doesn't sound like it's, it's echoing anymore. Rick? Eric, can you unmute? Rick?
Mr. Miller?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can. Yes, thank you very much. And there is no echo, so perfect. Thank you. We can, we can hear you. Just, once you start talking, then we, the mic turns on. Okay. Why don't we go to the person? We'll come back to Mr. Miller. And Todd, why don't we go to our next presenter, and then we'll come back and try to see if we can help him?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Brett Axon with the Sheriff's Office, please.
Thank you, Todd. Madam Chair, members of the board. Brett Axon, Chief Deputy to the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office, like many departments of the county, respond to the consequences of a fire event. Specifically, we are responsible for the evacuations, community security of evacuated areas, and then finally, the reentry of the residents back to their homes. Based on our availability and levels of fire danger, we attempt to actively patrol our more vulnerable rural populations for preventative measures. We have adopted, along with the Arizona Sheriff's Association and our own emergency management department, the Ready, Set, Go program, which encourages proactive measures to take before an emergency and actions to follow when our communities are threatened. And finally, as Art alluded to earlier, the sheriff supports the US Forest Service's campfire restrictions as a matter of public safety. And at this point, that's all I had to report. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, the State Forestry is back on, ma'am.
Super. Okay, so we have Mr. Miller.
Yeah, take two. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you perfectly. Thank you so much.
Yeah, sorry for the glitch, and good evening. So Rick Miller from the Department of Forestry and Fire Management. Just want to recap a lot of the same things that James and Art had discussed, that the COVID-19 has definitely made us think about doing business differently, putting in, you know, best management practices, and really trying to address, you know, the spread of the COVID-19, as well as meeting our responsibilities to suppress fire. So it's been very trying and very difficult to get through. I will say that in comparison, the state is relatively small with the amount of resources we have, and with the ability to respond. So we're a little bit of a loss. One of our mainstays of resources is our Department of Corrections crews. Typically, we have 12 of them onboard and available for fire response. And right now, they are being kept in-house for the foreseeable future due to the COVID-19. So our response is a little bit restricted due to that. We still do have, you know, several engines staffed and ready to go, some non-DOC crews available and ready to go. And by Thursday this week, we'll have two single-engine air tankers and an air attack up and ready to go. And the lion's share of our resources is, we have agreements with close to 200 local fire departments that we can call upon to join in our efforts to suppress fires. We've been working closely with them with a lot of our COVID-19 mitigation measures. And so with them, there's, there's quite a few resources that we can bring to bear. One of the, the additional things that I think James covered, right now, we are banning any RX until further guidance is provided, especially in light with the COVID-19. We have engaged in a pretty good public outreach, you know, trying to inform the, the public of our stance and, and our potential fire occurrence and such this year. So starting out early on that, one thing that I wanted to kind of back up and let you know, that with the small nature of our, of our organization, and I think Brian on the weather hit it pretty good, and so did Art with the predictions, we're expecting a very active fire season in the lower season, or in the lower desert elevations. And with our small organization, we have been planning to, you know, move our resources accordingly to respond to the fire and the fire season.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. Miller.
Yes?
Hold on just one second. Just a reminder, if everyone could please mute, just double check to make sure that your phone or your computer is muted, because we're hearing some conversations coming through. Sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure that we could all continue to hear you, Mr. Miller. So go ahead.
No problem. I was about ready to wrap it up. I will, I will throw it in before the questions come to me. At this point, the State Department of Forestry and Fire Management is not in support of going into stage-two fire restrictions, and are openly in discussions with the Forest Service and our other partners. We're trying real hard to strike that balance between, you know, one incident for another, but recognizing that, you know, the guidance to get out and recreate and stay active and healthy is, is part of that decision. And so those decisions will be ongoing, or discussions will be ongoing, but at this point, we are not in support of it. And with that, I'll turn it back to you all for questions or comments.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead Supervisor Ryan.
Madam Chair, and Rick, I would assume that those decisions are, I guess, put it a different way, above your pay grade right now. Others are probably making those recommendations. And I, you know, would state publicly that under the circumstances, I definitely disagree from a public safety standpoint to allow campfires. People can recreate without the campfires, or beyond trying to keep people warm for the sake of, in case they were in a situation where it was lifesaving. So that's a piece of it. Beyond that, you know, we've seen, because of the resource limitation, state after state after state actually do the same thing, do a statewide ban. So, you know, from my perspective, and I hope from the board perspective, you know, I, you know, would ask you to carry back to your organization. And I'll, I'll state it during the governor's call, when we have a governor's call tomorrow, that it makes perfect sense that we ban campfires at this time statewide. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the board? And Supervisor Ryan, just for clarification, we're talking about, we're talking about off fires, but not like, not propane, correct?
That's, that's correct. Open fires, campfires, not on-off switches at this point.
Okay, great. Just for the clarification, I know that we, that had been mentioned earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that that, we clarified that. Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Miller. And let's see, Todd, I think we have next the Red Cross, correct? With Brooke?
Yes, ma'am. Brooke, are you on?
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. The Red Cross is working closely with Coconino County Emergency Management and Coconino County Health and Human Services to ensure the safety of our local communities and our workforce, while still providing the help and hope they need should disaster strike. The Red Cross will continue to open disaster shelters at the request of emergency management and in coordination with local public health authorities. Our goal is to provide anyone in need after a disaster with a safe place to stay where they feel comfortable and welcomed. Utilizing hotel rooms and college dormitories will be our first preference. If there, if this is not an option and emergency shelter is necessary, it will look very different than normal. To help keep people safe, we will work with local officials to put in place additional precautions, including setting up a health screening process for everyone coming into the shelter, creating an isolation care area in the shelter, providing masks, tissues, and plastic bags throughout the shelter, following social distancing practices as much as possible by staggering meal times and adding extra spacing between couches, chairs, tables, and other items. We'll provide additional handwashing stations in addition to normal restroom facilities. We'll increase welfare, wellness checks to identify potential illness, including self-monitoring and checking temperatures of both shelter, of both shelter residents and staff. We'll be enhancing both cleaning and disinfecting practices throughout the shelter. We will continue to work closely with Coconino County Emergency Management and Public Health before, during, and after any incident. Thank you again, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Planton. Let me see if there are any questions from the board supervisors. Any questions from members of the board? Okay, well, thank you very much. I want to see if there's any further comments by the board, or any questions that you didn't think of, of the folks that presented who are still on the line.
Madam Chair, this is Madam Ryan.
Yes, go ahead.
I think we had Janet Dean there, or did she, is she no longer on the line?
I was just going to turn it back to Todd to see who else we continue to have on the line to give a presentation. So Todd?
Yes, Madam Chair. Jenna is still on, and there she is. Go ahead, Jenna.
Hi, Janet. Thank you so much for being on the line. No problem. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. We really appreciate the opportunity to take a quick moment tonight and update you on some of the work we've been doing around fire mitigation efforts. We really value being part of the team and a responder within this, within this space and working with emergency management. I'll be quick, just want to highlight a couple of things. First off, I hope it goes without saying, but safety and reliability are the top priorities for APS. We've been working year-round, like we have over the past several years, to minimize the risk of wildfires and educate our customers and communities on the importance of being fire-wise. So we are including that messaging as we speak with our customers. We do have a very comprehensive fire mitigation plan, one that is very robust, and probably one of the most robust in the utility industry. And our teams, our fire mitigation team and our forestry team implement this plan each year, again, working closely with our customers and communities. Couple of things to highlight. As part of that plan, we have an integrated vegetation management program that our APS forestry team performs. And this includes annual inspections of our transmission and distribution lines to ensure we've got the proper vegetation clearances around our equipments, around our equipment. The intent of this program is to create a safe area for our equipment to operate, but it also is to create fuel and fire breaks. And we know that our fires, our firefighting partners often rely on those and depend on those breaks as they fight fires and, and respond. Another program, we've got a defensible space around poles program. And the purpose of this program is to proactively create space around the poles to help protect our equipment from the impacts of wildfire, and also prevent wildfire emissions. And through this program, we clear vegetation within a 10-foot radius from our equipment poles. We also are performing line inspections and public safety patrols, and we're patrolling nearly 3,000 miles of overhead lines annually, using drones, vehicles, and also by foot in very heavily vegetated, vegetated areas, including the wildland urban interface. And we, we do this every year. We complete a pole, a pole inspection of our distribution heaters each year. And then we, through that, we identify any corrective work that we might need to do on those poles, and complete that maintenance in advance of fire conditions. And primarily, what I want to do is highlight some of our operational protocols that we put in place during fire season. So again, this year, as in previous years, we're going to turn off some equipment on our lines that is designed to automatically try to reclose if there's a disruption in power. And the reason we do that is we don't want that, those lines trying to be energized again unless we've actually seen them kind of been out and put eyes on, because we want to know what caused that disruption in power. We don't want to be trying to re-energize lines if there's, if it's on the ground, or if there's a tree tangled in it, because we don't want to create any risk of wildfire by doing so. So the thing we really just want to remind the board supervisors about with this protocol, is that means there could be prolonged outages if there is an outage on one of these lines during fire season. But we're doing this, we're putting eyes on the line before energizing it to prioritize the safety of our customers and communities. And everyone understands that when we talk to them about it, but if they do experience a prolonged outage during the summer, sometimes there are some, there's some frustration they can feel, and we just want to ask you to help us remind any of your constituents that you hear from, that's why they might experience more prolonged outage during the fire season. And to help our customers understand that, we do have some fire season. And to help our customers understand that, we do have some customer communication mechanisms in place. All of our customers on the lines, on the feeders that are impacted by our fire mitigation protocols will get a mailer about the end of this month, early May, reminding them of what we do to prevent wildfire at APS and to support them with some messaging on fire-wise and fire safety for their own homes and properties. And a new thing we're going to do this year is create a video. Because we aren't having as many face-to-face interactions because of circumstances right now, we're creating a video that we are going to be able to put out on social, through community chats, things like that, so that we can try to get that message out. So with that, I'll conclude. Again, thank you for letting us be part of the presentation tonight and share with you what we're doing to keep our communities safe.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Todd, I'm going to go and turn it back over to you. Unless there are questions for, let me ask if there are questions for Ms. Janet Dean with APS. Okay, thank you for that update. And go ahead, Todd.
Yes, Madam Chair. As you can see, within this hour, we've presented, we could present another two hours of the information that is so crucial to this region of the state. I do want to put a shout out to the COVID team that's currently in place, that's been in operation for about a month now. We have been able to, as a one-county response, operationalize an EOC virtually, which is a first for us in the heat of battle. So we're learning a lot of excellent tools of the trade during this COVID response, and we'll be exercising those here in the future with other operations. Mark Gaylord, myself, will prepare a written document for the board and management on further operations that are in play. And I just, out of interest of time, yield my time to Lucinda. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Todd, and want to thank all of the presenters tonight. Very important information that was shared. And I think we can see, given the dynamics related to COVID and fire season, and then, of course, we may well then have flood season, we are asking Todd to, to move into this arena, into the fire-flood arena, and really look at how are we going to establish virtual EOC for fire and/or flood, flood response, and, and then deal with the myriad of other issues that came up this evening. I think the discussion about dispatch, et cetera, and making sure that we're working very closely with our partners so that we can still respond effectively during potential disasters. So Todd will be moving into, really focusing on fire and flood. And Wes Deason will then be the logistics chief within the COVID IC that's set up right now. So, and then Sam Beckett from Public Works will also be assisting with, with the flood preparation as well as response planning. So, so just want to be, people to be aware of that, that we're, we're doing our best to cover all the options and issues that may arise. So thank you very much for, for this evening. I think it was a very important discussion.
Great. Well, thank you, Lucinda, and thank you, Todd, and everyone who presented. I do think that's very smart, because we do have to be ultra-prepared for fire season and for possible flooding. And with everybody's having to, you know, learn a new way of doing business. And I can just imagine the, the training and, you know, all of the discussion that's going on in terms of preparing crews, whether it be hotshot crews and all personnel and, you know, providing the vision for going forward. It certainly is not, it's not the way that we've done business in the past. And so we want to make sure that we, as well as everyone else, indicate just the importance of, of being prepared and, you know, getting out early is a, is a good thing. So thank you for that. Members of the board, is there anything else before we move on to our next update?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure. Yes, Supervisor Ryan?
Okay, a few different things on it. First and foremost, for everybody presenting, I want to thank you all. I always appreciate how we have worked together as partners. And again, our presentations last week and this week, there's been a shift in terms of where Forest Service is going, because they're pausing for the sake of this state. It sounds like Region has been contacted by the state related to whether or not we should proceed with a ban on campfires. I would hope that state would rethink where they are. And I'm not, I, I have to make a point to Mr. Miller. I am not directing any of this towards you. I really appreciate all the work that you're doing. But there's some level of intervention that's going on. We were having this meeting as a possibility of uniting together and looking at New Mexico already going tomorrow. It sounded like that was the direction that the forest would have potentially gone toward if everybody were aligned on it. I think it would make sense for us to consider a proclamation, maybe give it a week, but consider a proclamation in the near future where we would suggest that we ban open fires on private lands to help in this region, take a leadership role associated with it. I would recommend that we put together a letter encouraging the governor and Mr. Tenney to consider banning campfires statewide, considering the circumstance we are under and that we work together associated with that. The other piece that I do want to bring up, and I hope we just take a moment for the board to look at those two pieces, but the other piece, reaching back out to the Kaibab and Heather and gang, you know, unfortunately, we weren't able to put together a meeting. A lot of the work that we were thinking of doing was, we were looking at Paradise last year and everything that happened with Paradise, and potentially having a community education meeting. But with that, also evaluating our own communities and getting progressive in our own way of, you know, what's going on with our right-of-way? Should we do thinning associated with our right-of-ways? Do we take on a more upscale role in fire prevention? Because of COVID-19, we do need to put that aside for the time being. But I think it would be in all of our interests to continue thinking about that and moving toward that. We are, in our own communities, going to move forward with our, our community cleanup program. While people are at home, they have the ability to make their properties fire-wise and along with the cleanup, remove that fire danger out of the communities. So that would be a proactive piece. But, but I would suggest that, and I'd like to hear from the other board members, that we think about doing a proclamation and writing a letter to encourage this to happen at the state level.
Thank you, Matt. I do agree with you. Other members of the board?
Yeah, I'm in full, full agreement on that. Sending a letter and being an advocate for that. So we're all on the same, same kind of page of where we are.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Fowler?
I am in, I am in agreement with Supervisor Ryan. I think that we need to really take a lot more caution than not. So thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Parks?
Madam Chair? Well, I unfortunately disagree. I feel that because we are in the largest ponderosa pine forest in Arizona, we have a tendency to feel that we are a universal ecosystem here. We're not. Many, many of the areas in Arizona don't have the types of problems that we have with fire, especially down in the desert areas. So I think it would be wrong for us to, to do a proclamation to require or do a, do a proclamation to, to require statewide compliance with a fire ban. I think we need to leave this up to the folks that, that do the work. If, if it's the state fire folks in the state lands department, then we need to leave that decision up to them, just as we leave the decision up to the United States Forest Service to do it on, on the Forest Service lands. Now, as far as banning fires on private land, I believe that that's going to have to be taken care of by the localities also. There are, there are county supervisors all over the state that have just as much say in their county as we have in ours. And I think that they, we need to leave that decision to those county supervisors to make. And we should not be making it for them. We should not be asking the governor to make it for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Parks.
Madam Chair?
Anybody else? Yes, go ahead Supervisor Ryan?
Just for clarification, the proclamation would be for Coconino County, for the unincorporated areas prohibiting open fires. We do a proclamation instead of the implementation of the ordinances was discussed at the beginning of the meeting. We'd still permit on-off switches. In the meantime, we write a letter to the governor encouraging the statewide ban, if not a ban up in this region, so that, and/or not to inhibit the Forest Service from making their own declarations. They were ready to move in that direction last week. Now we had the state intervening, which came from the top level, to speak to Region and the Forest Service is on pause while those conversations could occur. They need cover so that we can look at our own region and, and push for what they were recommending before this.
Well, it seems like where there's enough, hearing the discussion from the board, that there is enough support of putting together a proclamation to, to, to move forward. I think just in terms of process, I would just, this is, I'm just looking at how we are, how we are, how we are, how would our agenda read for this in its presentation and discussion? So yes, we would want to get a proclamation together or some instrument together to, for the next board meeting to be able to consider it and take an action on it. Does that, is that sufficient Supervisor Ryan? Or do you want a letter that would be before that of inquiring about the, the decision or inquiring about, you know, why they would not move forward with wanting to ban campfires? Or do you want to go ahead and wait for our next board meeting to be able to put together a proclamation?
My, my recommendation is proclaim, we're not posted for proclamation.
Right.
But move that for next week. Put a letter together and outreach, obviously a tactical one, to state level on just what we discussed. We can see the region where it would really, if we had fires, it would inhibit them from implementing where the resources are. The whole presentation we got before this that really, you know, suggests the idea that banning campfires is a good idea. So I think, you know, we could put a letter together and, and make diplomatic, or have diplomatic discussions associated with that.
Okay. Well, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Yes, go ahead Supervisor Parks?
I, I have already expressed my disagreement with this, but if you are going to write a proclamation about this, and I will vote against it when you do, I do feel that you need to be very careful about allowing the, the other folks in this state. If, if, if you are going to write that proclamation, you need to be very careful in usurping the authority of the other folks in this state. And, and, and I don't think that that is what you need to be doing. And, and I, I will, I will not vote for a proclamation of that sort. Those people have the right and the ability to make their own decisions for their own localities, their own counties. And I don't think we need to be making it for them.
Okay. But I, I heard Supervisor Ryan say that's going to be for Coconino County. So it would be a, it would be a board proclamation that we would ask staff to write, to bring for consideration to the Board of Supervisors at our next meeting. So at that, at that meeting, then you would, all of us would be able to review it and provide input and then ultimately make a decision. And everyone would, of course, have the right to vote the way they wish. And we'll see if they get approved or if it does not.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize, I lost you for a few minutes. And so I probably lost the part where Supervisor Ryan said it was just Coconino County. So I apologize.
Yes. Right. And then we'll bring that back. And then we'll have into this board, we'll have another opportunity to consider it and read over the proclamation, provide some input, and then ultimate, ultimately see if it, if it passes by a vote of the Board of Supervisors. All right. Well, thank you so much, everyone. Just appreciate your partnership with Coconino County, everyone that presented. Certainly, you're all thinking of how to be prepared. And we, anything that we can do to assist, we stand ready to do that. So thank you very much. We are now going to go on to our next agenda item. It is an update. It's agenda item number 15. It's an update discussion and possible action regarding the new coronavirus, the COVID-19 response and advocacy efforts. And we have Marie Peoples, Dr. Peoples, who will be providing us with the updates. Oh, and actually, Dr. Peoples, I should have just been sensitive about this. Do we need to just take a quick break? Or is everybody okay to continue to proceed? This is board members and, and staff. Should we move forward? Or do you need a quick, like, three-minute break?
I'm good Supervisor Archuleta.
Okay, let's move forward. Thank you so much.
Okay, excellent. So good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, County Manager Jane, and everybody participating in the call. I appreciate the opportunity to provide a COVID-19 update. We are in week five of the full-scale county response and the Emergency Operations Center being open. During this time, the county has continued to be a leader in the effort to reduce the transmission of COVID-19 and to protect the public. The county has had many partners, which includes other local governments, tribal communities, and many of our non-governmental community partners as well. For people participating that may not be familiar with the response efforts, I want to note that the county quickly declared an emergency, quickly approved standing up the quarantine in isolation hotel, and supported staff in developing drive-through specimen collection sites. Additionally, teams worked hard to develop messaging for the public by initiating daily Facebook Live updates and daily media calls. There's many more activities that I didn't list, just because we don't have time. But I wanted to just give, show some of the things that have been done and how this has been an all-hands effort with many partners. I would like to specifically recognize and thank all the staff working in the Emergency Operations Center, facilities, IT, human resources, public affairs, and Public Works. I also want to thank the county manager and Board of Supervisors for their ongoing support of staff and community. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and present some of the highlights. And, and I'll keep the same trend that I did last time, just going through and doing sections. And if you So as of today, we have 259 positive COVID-19 cases. That represents a 22% positivity rate. As I've shared before, members of the board, that 22% is extremely high, but it also reflects the aggressive specimen collection and testing that we have been able to do. Unfortunately, we have had 24 deaths associated with COVID-19. So regarding the data, I do want to share, and especially for people that might be listening in, uh ADHS, Arizona Department of Health Services, this past weekend on Sunday, updated their reporting matrix and began releasing statewide COVID-19 data on their dashboard down to the zip code level. So the zip code level, they're reporting uh cases of zero, and they're doing this through case labeling and shading. So cases, our communities, excuse me, where there's zero cases are a particular color, and then it goes from cases one to five, and then it goes six to 10 or greater than 10. And that is still done so that uh communities are not, or individuals within those communities are not de-identified in terms of the one to five. We've had several questions about that in terms of why someone might not know if there's two in their community or four in their community. And so what I would say is that the number doesn't matter so much. What that tells us is that we know there's cases within that zip code community. And as we know and have continued to hear on the news, we have many asymptomatic people within the community. We also know that testing has been so incredibly limited, that these are just indicators of where cases are, and that most likely there are many more cases that just have not been caught, per se. I do want to share that ADHS uh is suppressing data from zip codes where tribal residents comprise more than 50% of the population. And these zip codes are grayed out on the map. So this, of course, impacts Coconino County quite a bit, as we are blessed to have many tribal communities within our county. So that does mean we-
Madam Chair, Marie, may I interrupt us for a minute? So uh, we're not seeing a presentation as you present, uh, and, and so uh, I've been able to follow uh from a verbal perspective, but just so you're aware of that.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Let's see, so we don't have the maps to show. We will have our dashboards on the website. So for individuals that aren't familiar, that are listening in, I appreciate Supervisor Ryan pointing that out. I would encourage you to visit our website and to see some of the dashboards that we've had presented, and we'll continue to update. So we were pleased that ADHS did release the zip code level data, because it aligns, of course, with the board and with the EOC's desire to be able to provide enhanced information to our residents. And so we'll continue to try to perfect that information. Uh, there is a lot of complications with zip code level data, just in terms of how it's reported, what communities it really represents, and time is of the essence, so I'll just give a couple of examples of PO boxes. Individuals may use a PO box, and so therefore there's a lot of tracking that goes into that to see which zip code it actually belongs in, where that individual may actually reside. Another piece that we have recognized um with the zip code level data is that if individuals either don't list an address, or if perhaps again they have a PO box, the physician that ordered uh the COVID test may just use their office as an address. So we've had quite a bit of that, and so it's taking a lot of time to go through the data, but our Epi team and communicable disease investigators are terrific, and they're continuing to do that. So Madam Chair, are there any questions about the data before I move on?
Um, let me see if there's any, if there are any questions. Members of the board, do you have any questions for Marie at this time? Okay, I don't uh-
I just want to, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, yeah.
I don't have a question, but I just want to um just thank Marie and her team and our county manager for um taking on um such a tremendously difficult um uh situation that we're in. I just want to thank all of them and just really um have to, you know, um, this is when you, they have, they're all holding on together to be able to go through this um very difficult emotional times for them. So I just want to just recognize their work and also just let them know that, just really thank um deputy managers, everyone that is um on the daily break, on a daily basis, every single moment dealing with this um, this situation that we're in right now. Um, so I just want to just let them know that I think about them, and we all do, and I just think that um it's, we always say we're a county family, and this is the time that we're a county family, and we're all holding on, onto each other to um be able to take care of, excuse me, take care of our citizens and ourselves and our families. So, thank you, thank you to all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. That means a lot to the teams that I know that are listening and working hard. They greatly appreciate that, so thank you. So moving on to, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, go ahead Dr. Peoples, sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Moving on to specimen kit information, um I'm pleased to announce that uh University of Arizona donated 300 specimen collection kits. They did arrive today, so that helped our cadre of uh kits quite a bit, and hopefully we'll be able to receive more from those. Uh, we are working with TGEN to work out the mechanics of processing those kits, um so things look good there. Um, in our inventory, not counting those 300, we have 98 viral transport kits, and then we have 111 saline kits that were left. And then 200 kits from uh TGEN as well, that we've been piecing together with different swabs. So we've got quite a bit in our inventory, which is great, because as you guys know, we're standing up collection sites this week in the Williams and Tucson communities. And we don't have a, a number of really how many that we might use there, so, um, and we hope to be able to do this in the future as well. Right now, we do not have reoccurring specimen collections uh set up in those communities. And we are also continuing to work on trying to set them up in other communities as well, um Fredonia as well as some other areas. So that planning will continue to um move forward. Some of the barriers with doing that is just having security. Um, we've been working with many of our uh community providers. They have donated their time to work with us at uh the specimen collection sites, and there's many parameters involved in doing this. And one of those is the requirement to have security, and then of course we have to have appropriate provisions to be able to hold the specimens and transport the specimens. So all things that we can work through, it just takes some logistical planning. So we'll continue that. And then moving on, oh, and of course our Fort Tuthill site is uh continuing Monday through Friday as well from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That site is not going down as we stand up the Williams and Tucson sites, so we'll be running multiple sites on those days. And then moving on, if there's no questions, Madam Chair, about the testing site updates or specimen collection, I'll move on to another category.
Um, sure, Marie, if I, if I could, I'll just go ahead and just ask, so um I did get a question today to see if there's um, if we're gonna think about moving testing sites to other parts of the county, I mean, they um, understanding that of course, as you mentioned, we're gonna be in Tucson and Williams. Will there be other areas that we might stand up sites at um for a day or so?
Absolutely, thank you Madam Chair. We are working through those logistics, it's often dependent on if we can get a provider to travel with us, and if we can have a site that's appropriate for managing traffic, and if there's lots of sites that are appropriate. So yes, we are definitely still uh planning that, and we want to be able to serve all of our communities.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Babbitt? Yes, go ahead Supervisor Babbitt.
So thanks. Yeah, thank you. So Marie, a couple of quick questions on the testing. Um, so it sounds like we are, we are building modest amounts of inventory. I noticed in the email uh that we still have a couple thousand backordered tests, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, obviously the hope is that those come in, I guess next week, they were put off one more week, and we'll see, but what is the, a couple of specific questions. What is the turnaround time uh for testing at TGEN? How does that compare to private labs? Is one question. And then the second question, um, what is the protocol for uh expanding to, you know, the next concentric circle out for community, you know, as we inch toward community-wide testing? Uh, we, we still have the kind of core being built around healthcare providers and those whose a positive result would change their treatment, correct?
Yes.
And, and that's it, right?
For right now, because of the limited specimen availability, yes.
So, that first question, and then second, so what is the protocol for, let's say we get 2,000 tests here and we have 2,500 next week, how are we gonna start um getting a better understanding uh of, of the trajectory of the virus here as we go in towards community-wide testing?
Thank you. So should we be fortunate enough to get those 2,000 kits in, which um, so I would fully answer your question, but we continue to check every day and they continue to get pushed back, so I'm, I'm not sure that will occur, but we'll hope that we do. In that event, we would be able to stand up additional collection sites across communities. We could also work with our partner networks. You know, we've been the collaborator or convener, if you will, of the specimen collection sites, but if we had additional kits such as the 2,000, we could give those to our different providers in different communities, and they could act as a collecting source for us. And we have providers that are very willing to do that. So we would be able to collaborate within that manner. Um, and also it would allow us to do some of the congregate testing, uh which we've saying wanted to do. Wanted to do. So within our different shelters, across our jails.
Also gyms.
So we would be able to do some of that.
In terms of the turnaround time for the specimen collection, it has improved since weeks one through three. Commercial laboratories, there's still a little bit of a delay, but um as you may recall, some of the commercial laboratories were taking seven to 10 days, um and in a few outside cases, longer than that. And the commercial laboratories have come back a lot quicker, I would say 48 hours or so. Um, and the same with TGEN and the state laboratories, running 24 to 48 hours depending on the day that they're dropped off. One of the complicating factors could be that TGEN takes over 30 hours and all of the days this Friday. Um, so that would be a longer delay for those individuals that had specimen collection done on a Friday. And, but we're still working through all of that, but the bottom line is the turnaround from all of the laboratories has improved a lot as we've moved through this. Supervisor Babbitt, were you able to get all of that, Marie? At some point, it, it sounded a little bit garbled um in terms of what you were saying, but I just want to make sure that Supervisor Babbitt got what he needed.
I did, thank you very much. We follow up on the concentric circle analysis, and the national government to be identified. Let's see, we have this.
Supervisor, sorry, but I'm not thinking of that. Yeah, I know. Supervisor Babbitt, you're coming in. But I did hear you say that you did get um what you needed um from the information that was provided, so um thank you very much. Other questions uh for Dr. Peoples about the testing site? Okay, then go ahead Dr. Peoples, go on to the next part of your report.
Great, thank you very much Chair Archuleta. So now I'll go to our um first responders. We've had quite a bit of conversation internally and externally. It's been top of mind across the nation in terms of keeping our first responders safe as they um are potentially exposed to individuals that have COVID-19, either knowingly or unknowingly. And so I believe, um, I know the board is aware, but for those participating, um, the health districts or Health and Human Services entered into MOUs very early on in our COVID-19 response, with the majority of first responders who across our county. And what that MOU allowed was for first responders to be able to contact us if they suspected an exposure. And then when they did that, then we looked up uh the individual's name with the information that they provided and shared all of the information that we could. And by, by what we could, um, we know that we have imperfect data sets. We know everybody that we have tested, and we know everybody that has come back with a positive result. But for instance, if I were tested in my uh private physician's office, that information would not be in our system until a result came through. So anyway, we were working with first responders and continue to work with first responders in that capacity. And we've been discussing for the last couple of weeks how we could go to more of a uniform approach and perhaps release information to first responders on a daily basis, so that they would just have that information um proactively, rather than needing to contact us after an exposure. And so today that changed a little bit. As I shared with the board earlier, the governor has issued an executive order at late this afternoon. And so that executive order allows health departments across the county to share that once-a-day information, if you will, with first responder dispatch entities. Um, so that was good, because it allowed that vehicle and gave some kind of prescriptors around what that should look like. Um, the limiting factor is that names are not included, it was only addresses. So we will move forward in trying to get this done as quickly as possible. We're reviewing the executive order uh more just to make sure that we get it right. Um, but in the meantime, we will continue to support our first responders in giving them the information that they need, and then we will work out our protocols to get this done, of course with the board and county manager's support, because it is first and foremost important to us that we keep our first responders and healthcare workers safe. Any questions about that, Madam Chair, from the board?
Any questions, board members? Okay, nope, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. And then, so just an update on the quarantine and isolation hotel, and I know there's quite a bit of conversation about it at the beginning of this meeting, so I won't belabor it. Um, but again, for individuals not familiar with it, the hotel was stood up as a continuum of care model to reduce the transmission of COVID-19, mostly in sheltering settings. Referrals uh from, or into the hotel, excuse me, are made through hospitals, so Page Banner and Flagstaff Medical Center, and these are unsheltered individuals um that are housing insecure and that were undergoing testing for COVID-19 or had positive results of COVID-19. Um, and then last week, we also expanded, with those same protocols being in place for who is eligible, but we expanded it to our sheltering partners, and we, in conjunction with our sheltering partners, worked out protocols for what that would look like, and provided those, so that they could then have people enter directly into uh the hotel for that quarantine and isolation. And so to date, we have not received any requests for that, but the mechanism is there, and we will continue to reach out to our sheltering partners, uh to make sure that they are aware to make sure, answer any questions. Um, throughout COVID-19, we have, the processes have evolved. Everything has been extremely fluid as we learn more about COVID, and so I have no doubt that this will continue to evolve as well, and will be as flexible um as we can when working with our sheltering partners. Um, I will share that to date, we've had 44 guests within the hotel. Um, we currently have nine uh individuals staying there right now as well. I'll also share, as you all know, uh the National Guard has given us four staff members, which we requested in week one of the COVID event, and so we did receive those individuals on-site. And there is an Army National Guard Master Sergeant who has been helping support uh hotel operations along with this other staff. So that's been a great benefit to us as well. If there's no questions about the hotel, Chair Archuleta, I will move on to discussing personal protection equipment.
Right, no, I don't think there are any questions, and of course, we had an earlier conversation about that during the consent agenda, so um, thank you. Why don't we go ahead and move on to the next?
Yes, so personal protection equipment, or PPE. Um, Arizona Department of Health Services did receive a shipment of additional PPE and conducted inventory uh over the weekend. We did get that shipment, it was not incredibly large, but we are appreciative of everything that we, we received. Uh, we've got 650 procedure masks, 40 N95s and 70 uh N95s with valve, and then 30 K95s. And um, you know, I won't belabor that, we're really grateful for the masks, especially the N95s that we're receiving. Um, but the PPE that we are distributing to hospitals and law enforcement, and the burn rates or the use rate of that PPE is so incredibly high, that we are continuing to source PPE through every avenue that we- through every avenue that we have. I shared during the last update that we have added a buyer to our logistics team. And so what the buyer position means is that someone that is what she spends all of her time doing is looking at our medical contracts and trying to piggyback off of different orders and making sure that we can source additional PPE. We have been receiving more orders, which hopefully that is indicative that the supply chain is loosening up a little bit. So we'll continue to monitor it and continue to see. We have received, and this came from the logistics team, Wes Deason. So we appreciate him chairing up the logistics team with the transition of Todd Whitney and appreciate everything that he did during his time there as well. So currently, we have fulfilled 242 orders for PPE and that is mostly for our hospitals and first responders. And then, of course, we've routed 17 PPE orders through to DEMA as well, so continuing to be a partner in those efforts. And then just real quickly, I already mentioned the National Guard, but I would like to go ahead and mention their names and their positions. So again, Master Sergeant Gunderson is a non-commissioned officer and he is in charge. And it's been, again, incredibly helpful to have him onsite. Staff Sergeant Ballasteros has been assisting us as well. Specialist Shirlene Panis and Specialist William Simmons has been assisting. So hopefully, at the end of this COVID events, board, you will be able to meet these individuals and we can thank them for their assistance. The guard members will also be assisting us with our specimen collection sites in Williams and Tucion.
We're very thankful for them and obviously put them to work immediately, so that's great.
Oh, yes, ma'am. We absolutely did. So that was good. Community services and rental and utility assistance updates. So we've received 1,476 applications. We've assisted 150 individuals to date. 76 individuals have been able to seek alternative sources of assistance from other community partners. So there's 1,326 individuals that are awaiting assistance. We have spent almost $99,000 to date and the remaining funding balance for assistance is almost $41,000. And so we'll continue to provide you those numbers and those snapshots. And hopefully, Michelle Axland put together the infographic chart on that that you all received last week. So hopefully that was helpful information and we'll continue putting those together and distributing that as well.
And did you say, can you repeat the number of applications, Marie?
I'd be happy to. I can also put this information in an email for you guys tomorrow.
Oh, perfect. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
There's lots of numbers.
Yeah.
So the applications received was 1,476.
Mm-hmm.
And then we've been able to fulfill 150 of those so far.
And are we still averaging about 800, 700 to 800 now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, super, thank you.
Yes, and I will make sure that we send that information out to you again tomorrow. And like I said, we'll continue to provide that infographic. Okay, so I do want to share and I will also forward you all some information tomorrow as well. So as you know, NAU Northern Arizona University, they have partnered with us to help provide epidemiologists and some of their team. And they've been helping us with looking at, well, they've helped with a variety of tasks. They've also helped with some of the disease investigations and the contact callbacks and they've also been assisting us with some of the modeling. So I do have some models that I'll share with you via email tomorrow. It's a lot to present through this type of format, so I'll be ready to answer any additional questions. And they, I know, would also welcome, whether it's setting up a meeting or setting up a time if board members are interested in learning more about their models, I know that would be welcomed. So just a couple things that I pulled out of the report that I wanted to share with you is that, so the model tracks how many visits to the hospital system we might expect in terms of additional COVID as it progresses. The model's in its early stage and is still in need of additional data from the other northern Arizona counties. And so I shared with you during the last report that one of the deficits, if you will, is that because we've done so much aggressive testing, that that information is not available for all of our sister counties. But they, NAU EPIs have reached out to our sister counties and have sought their own agreements and access to data. And so they anticipate a web-based application to be available within a week. So that's really exciting as we share across counties different information. So one of the things that I thought was really neat about their modeling that they've done is that they have determined that social distancing has likely reduced contact rates by approximately 40 to 60% across our region. That's pretty astounding. And so a lot of that is due to the emergency orders that the county has put in along with our other jurisdictions within the county. Additionally, most likely hotel operations have contributed to reducing the infection rates. And so what this is doing is collectively flattening the curve. So that was really neat to see. The model also demonstrated the impact of 45-day, 60-day, and 75-day interventions. And so they have some recommendations that are within their models as well that I won't go into right now, but they talk about just in terms of how long perhaps social distancing should be in place, what the impact could be for flattening the curve if social distancing is not in place for a longer period of time, what that might mean for our hospitals, what it might mean for additional community spread. So I will leave it at that. I'm certainly not the expert on their reports, but I did want to share a few of the highlights. And again, I will provide you that information tomorrow. And with that, Chaira Chalata, if there's not any questions, I would turn it over to Kim Muselman to share about the alternative care sites.
Great, let me ask if there are any questions. Okay, hearing, oh, wait, wait a minute, I think there might be any, any questions before we turn it over to Kim Muselman. Okay, hearing none, go ahead. Thank you so much, Dr. Peoples. And now on to, now to Kim Muselman. Ms. Muselman?
Good evening. Thank you, Chaira Chalata, Supervisors. Just a quick update regarding the alternative care sites. The St. Luke's High Acuity Facility is underway being built out as we speak and the RFP for service provision will close tomorrow at 5:00 PM. As for the next top priority, that is the Walgreens site here in Flagstaff. And the, this facility will be for a low-acuity site. The letter of intent was signed yesterday. The lease was still being negotiated as of this afternoon, but everything is moving forward. The Army Corps of Engineers indicates a 15-day build-out timeframe. The RFP for hospital services will likely be issued this week, this afternoon. We were advised that we would have more details about that hopefully tomorrow on our 1:00 PM call. The other piece I'd just like to share is that there was also a, what was called a huddle call today with many of the medical providers across all of northern Arizona. And in that call, again, it was reiterated to all of the representatives from the state and others that certainly here in northern Arizona and specifically in Flagstaff and our Page region, that we have a major concern regarding bed space and even more concern regarding nursing staff and other medical staff. So the state is fully aware of the urgent need for us to increase our capacity and are very committed to moving forward with our alternative care site. And then there's not any, excuse me, if there's not any other questions, that concludes my update.
Great, well, let me ask if there are any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Kim, so what is, so this conversation, how it relates to the Hotel Aspen, is, can quarantine or self-isolation be considered part of what a low-acuity facility would provide? And so is there, what are the discussions about this facility relinquishing the utilization issues that happened with Hotel Aspen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Babbitt. I'll do my best to answer this because there's still a lot of unknowns surrounding this. Certainly, daily on our call regarding the alternative care sites, there's also conversations regarding the hotel-type operations such as what we are operating at Aspen. And it is not yet clear if this will completely be able to take the place of what we are doing at Hotel Aspen. However, it is not clear that it will not. So I will continue to be questioning about that and as we move forward to see what opportunities exist to be able to step back from our commitment at Hotel Aspen. And I apologize, I don't have any further information at this time.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Okay, and that was Supervisor Babbitt. And now Supervisor Ryan?
All right, thank you. And I'm not sure if Kim will answer this or Marie will answer it. In the huddle group, I mean, part of it's associated with these alternative sites or maybe it's all there. But did you, we, you know, we had an earlier request to ask at state level that they would consider risk matrix, matrix associated with the PPEs. Was that discussed there or not? And while I'm on questions, another question is, has there been any further information related to rapid testing and where those are being set up?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Ryan. I will answer the question with respect to the huddle call. That was, the discussion about matrix of PPE was not discussed there. However, that is certainly on the top of our radar, as many of you are aware. Many of us at the EOC are involved in numerous meetings with the state at various levels and that continues to be brought up at the forefront. And we appreciate your advocacy at the state level and on the governor's call in urging that to be top priority. Certainly, it is brought up with respect to the medical providers indicating the high number of cases that we have hospitalized in comparison to other counties despite our population size. And so that is constantly at the forefront and therefore then the PPE concept is also brought up with that as well. But we will continue to wave that flag in every opportunity that we get. And Marie, I guess I would defer to you. I don't have specifics on the rapid testing other than some of what we briefly heard on the governor's press release this afternoon.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ms. Muselman's correct. We have not received additional information from ADHS. As a matter of fact, there was an update call with ADHS today, but that really went over the governor's orders that I already talked about in relation to first responders. There has not been any new information or any information at all on rapid testing outside of what was shared in the governor's press release today. And where it was shared, and I'm sure each of you know this already, but it was shared that there were a certain number of machines that were going to be deployed across the county, excuse me, across the state. I wish they were across the county. We have not yet learned where those are going to be placed and how that prioritization is going to be determined. So any advocacy on that front would be appreciated.
Yeah, we definitely need to keep up on that. And, you know, as has been discussed, you know, testing seems like the area that will help us figure out, you know, how to move gradually out of this. But along that line on the testing piece, is there any information on antibody testing in the meantime?
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. We're hearing a lot about it in the news, but we haven't really heard more about it hitting the streets for us per se. TGEN I know is working towards that if they haven't already accomplished it. But again, you have to have the specimen collection kits in the process to be able to do that. So, you know, fortunately, we are prepared in terms of having laboratory that could help manage that if, when we get those types of tests available to us. It just, we're not there yet.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Dr. Peoples, sure, go ahead, Supervisor Parks.
Dr. Peoples, I'm pretty interested in the antibody testing too. And I heard a rumor that there were several of the antibody test devices that were, had been given to the state by the federal government. Is there any truth to that?
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. I'm unsure of that. That could be what the governor was alluding to in terms of the machines that would be distributed across the state. I don't know where they were procured from. We will certainly dig into that tomorrow and work with ADHS to see if there's any additional information on when those would be deployed across counties and again, how we could be prioritized.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
So Marie, this is Supervisor Fowler. I have a question on the two sites that are going to be started and we are going to be staffing those. Do we have enough staff to carry that on and who's our partner? And I also ask about why not Page since that's where a lot of, you know, large numbers are coming from. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chaira Chalata, Supervisor Fowler. Appreciate the question. So yes, our staff are going to be staffing those two sites. We do have the staff, but it is hard to continue to manage particularly if we were to set up multiple sites on one given day. Because these are just one-day sites and we haven't worked them into a continuous schedule, it's a little bit more manageable. And we, as I've shared, are partnering with North Country Health Center. They are providing the provider for us to be able to go to these two sites. The FMC has continued to provide the provider for the Fort Tet Hill site Monday through Friday. So it is, again, a community effort with different providers stepping up to assist us with that effort. In regards to not going to Page, we've received a lot of those questions and I certainly understand that from a community perspective, that it seems like we would do more testing in an area that has been noted for several reasons and of course, because of the high number of cases. But the fact is, is that we know that there's a high number of cases in that area and in the surrounding tribal communities. And so we know there's already clusters present. And so it doesn't necessarily do us any more good from a public health surveillance perspective to continue testing in a location where we know there's high case counts. And what we need to do is to be able to identify cases in other areas across our county so that we can respond there as well. And other areas of the county for many reasons, whether it's lack of providers, lack of testing supplies, whatever the case may be, individuals in those communities have not had access to specimen collection and testing like those within the Page area and the Flagstaff area. So therefore, we decided upon Williams and Tucion. As I mentioned earlier, we are considering Fredonia and some other areas. We're continuing to work with our out-of-state partners as well. And I say Fredonia because we're working with our Utah colleagues, number one, to determine, you know, where's the easiest test site, where are people going, if they're going anywhere, and how can we partner? So we're going to continue trying to get spread across the county. And in the event that we do get a large shipment of those test kits in, we would indeed go to Page and do some additional testing. As the COVID-19 event progresses, I'm really interested in doing retesting of those that have already tested positive to see if they are in fact negative. There's a lot of assumptions in the CDC guidelines about 14 days being the window, but as we know, illness impacts people differently. A common cold might impact me for three days and might impact somebody else for only two. So we would like to be able to do some additional advanced testing in the Page area. We just don't have the supplies to make that the priority right now. I hope that answers your question, Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you, it does.
Other questions?
Not necessarily questions, but a comment if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so as we're in the middle of this and we're seeing the need for tests and we know there, it's going to take a long time to develop a vaccine or likelihood is there at least, there are actually some discussions starting to happen about folks wanting to open things back up, which kind of, you know, I understand the economic pressure associated with it, but then again, there is, you know, the threat of having additional surges happening. Just today, I was in conversation with Supervisor Randy Garrison and the Verde Valley groups are pushing to try and get things opened up down there. are pushing to try and get things opened up down there. So, you know, this is a piece of conversation that it helps for people to understand what the transmission rates are, and how the threat is in the community. But even more so, why the push to keep going and trying to get the ability to have test materials and the testing capability is there. So that's my comment right now.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Anyone else?
My only suggestion would be that we certainly, tomorrow, will have quite a bit of, quite a bit of material to talk about on the call with the governor's office and staff. And so I think also, maybe just formalizing some of what we spoke about today to the governor, and a letter would be, would be helpful as well. I mean, obviously, we've been doing some of this, we've been doing this all along in terms of advocating and sending letters when, when we, when we need to, to reinforce what we're advocating for verbally. And so I think just taking what we're hearing tonight and putting it in a letter after the phone call tomorrow would be, would be good to do.
I, just a comment, I would agree with you, Madam Chair. Phone call will be on Thursday.
Great, yes, thank you. Yesterday and Thursday, right?
Correct.
It's twice a, twice a week. Okay, super. Well, that gives us time then to, you know, formalize our comments in a letter, and then speak to it at that meeting as well.
Dr. Peoples, anything else?
Chair Chalata, members of the board, that's all that I have. Again, I appreciate all of your support, and we will continue trying to get answers and find out more about the testing and expand our sites as we can. But again, a huge thanks to all of the team. Appreciate it.
Great, well, I know that many members of the board have mentioned this already, but we continue to just see our county teams, you know, do extraordinary work, and to be relentless in their, in their advocacy, and in their organization, and all of the efforts against the coronavirus and keeping our community safe. And just want to thank you, Dr. Peoples, for your leadership as the person who is the point person of the EOC on this, on this pandemic. And I know that you've been working tirelessly, as Kim Musselman and all the other folks there at the EOC. And so just thank you for your extraordinary work. And the board continues to be strong advocates for the county to ensure that we have what we need to meet our community's needs. And it's, it's challenging, but we certainly have a lot of people at Coconino County who are up to the challenge. Thank you for that.
Okay, Mr. Jane, anything that you have to add? If not, we'll go on to our next item.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. If you don't mind, I'd like to just give just a couple minutes to Eric and potentially Joanne, just to talk briefly about something that staff talked about today, that we'd like to talk about, share on the EOLT call in the morning regarding a COVID-19 task force. So Madam Chair, if it's okay, we turn a couple minutes to Eric.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, go ahead.
Good evening Chairwoman and members. Eric Peterson, Public Affairs Director. Briefly going to share a screen here with you. Joanne and I have been working together on, and just some brief conversations, some ideas that have popped up. And this really, in relation to COVID funding, as you can see on the screen, but it's essentially a conversation, I believe the screen should be up, we can all see it, really a conversation about, much like the stimulus, and when the great recession hit the state, having a team that helped to understand how to take in large amounts of unexpected monies to deal with those costs and the revenue issues and such, having that sort of same type of methodology in our side here as a county. And looking at, sort of breaking down some silos and really helping to get a full picture as you look at some of the potential goals that I just quickly laid out this afternoon, about documenting all the funding streams that are certainly dedicated to COVID-19 response, but also those that arise out of it. So things like infrastructure availability, not just for advocacy purposes, but just simply to know and to make sure we have our, our numbers down. And then this team really looking at criteria, and then what do we, if we actually receive things in, what are departments getting in in relation to what pot of money, so that we have a fuller picture of the funding that comes in, and that's available to us. I have talked with members of my team. Julian Wolfe is willing to help us catalog and continue on this project. Chris Pasters has our eCivis portal license to be able to access grant possibilities. Tammy Rouschenbach from Finance has been sort of loaned as part of their perdues into this as well. We've got a couple potentials we thought about, Jeremy Floyd and Amy Young. Joanne and I would sort of take the reins on this, simply use some tactics of team sites, MS forums, easy ways to communicate and collaborate that we have built in here. But in reality, what we're really talking about is making sure that the board is comfortable and understanding that, you know, we can't, we can't exist in silos about where the federal funds are going. We need to have a full sense of this, given the magnitude of, of what this pandemic and the response in the economy has been. So that is the very brief overview of what we're calling, what I briefly at this time calling the COVID-19 Funding Task Force. Nothing is set, but I would just appreciate your comments, if you have any, if this is the right path to go down, if there are some changes or concerns that you have, or, and you don't have to answer all those tonight, but as we sort of look at this, this potential.
Great, well, thank you very much Eric, and thank you for your work on this, and thank you to Joanne. I think that having a task force is a great idea, and a great direction to go to. I really, I really feel like having Coconino County ready to, you know, access any funding and pursue legislation that enables the county to position itself is, is great. And so I'd be happy to give you some more input later on, but thank you so much for taking the initiative to do this.
Other comments or questions from the board?
If I may, Liz.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So actually, yeah, I, same thing. I think we're, there's so much coming, and we're getting hit by so much, but then how can we be nimble also, and be prepared to make recommendations? I think the task force makes a lot of sense. In the meantime, you know, I think Eric had mentioned in a prior meeting, or during elected officials meeting and leadership, that creating a matrix, sort of like we have for when we do legislation, that, you know, departments are watching and responding. I think Eric suggested the possibility of having some tool like that, that Julian might be able to, you know, be working together on, that can help this team out, but also help us out. As, you know, we, we want to be nimble, and how do we respond, and, and try and get these monies that are coming forward to help us out? So, yeah, it would, I like what the recommendations are, and this is, I guess, the next step that we can take here.
This is Supervisor Fowler.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is really very much needed, so I just really appreciate you putting this together because of just huge bills that are coming through. We have three, we have another one, and another one that's going to be coming through. So, and all of that, everyone's trying to dig in there, see what's in it. So I think this is very good strategy. Just want to thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other state or federal legislative or administrative matters from Public Affairs, Eric?
Eric?
There we go.
He's talking, bud.
I think I would have remembered unmute, being the one that is muting everyone. So we do have a couple other things. I do want to point out, I think you all saw today, an issue from Craig Sullivan in regards to COVID-4, Phase 4. And so I'm going to try to, to get this shared. You should now see a letter addressed to Chuck Schumer and Nancy Pelosi here on your screens. And I will share this letter with you, and I'm just going to scroll on real quick so you can see who signed it. It's really the State Associations of Counties. The point of this letter, and what we are dealing with, is COVID-4. So the infrastructure network that we are, are looking at, in this bill, is really dealing with, is got a problem of using the CDBG formula, which really, really does not treat counties well. The CDBG formula was developed to deal with housing density and community development issues. It's really an urban-focused formula, and will not recognize county government's public health role and the extra burden that we will bear. And I, I want to be clear, so you know, this letter, what the counties are advocating on the national side writ large, is not sitting well with our city brethren, because they have been pushing hard to use this formula. And we are pushing hard back as a county writ large entity, through the National Association of Counties, that the CDBG formula does not represent us well. And so I have talked with Bob and Anna. Certainly, our mainline goal is always to try to preserve our best funding opportunities. They agree with us. They are working hard to communicate what you saw from me earlier today, that a formula that needs to first and foremost recognize that we, and give a preference to those of us that have the public health statutory duty, which in Arizona, we as counties do. So this is an area where local governments aren't necessarily agreeing, and so this is going to cause some consternation and hardship as we work through this meeting. I don't think we can, we don't necessarily, are not guaranteed to lose in this battle, but I'm, what I'm saying is, is that it's not a clear-cut local governments all agreeing. This is now pieces of the pie being fought over by those of us trying to, to get the pie, so, to use the colloquialism. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. I'll make sure you have this. You saw the other letter that CSA sent out this morning. We did connect with our delegation as well on that. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and answer any questions about what that issue is. We're not expecting this bill till May, but the point is, if leadership puts it down the road that this is the formula, that's how the bill sort of gets built out from there. And, and again, this will really, really give another bigger win in funding to larger communities with a lot more density than we have, and will put rural communities that are, like ours, at a disadvantage in the overall formula. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that Supervisors.
So Eric, thank you so much for that. And I, I wanted to ask you if, if you've heard from NACO, if they are suggesting an alternative formula. I mean, it's like the CDBG, because it affects, of course, all states and counties and cities. It's an, you know, it's an easy formula to latch onto, and it's not, and as you say, there's winners and losers with that, so it's not acceptable. So are there some alternative proposals being put out there, so that, so that Congress does not latch on to CDBG?
Well, right now, I don't, I think the answer is no. NACO hasn't said a specific thing. And the best in the short turnaround time that we had, essentially about six hours, was, and I talked with Craig, and we, he and I just literally sat down, and I said, any formula, population-based or whatever, if you have a preference towards, if you split the local governments through that, a preference towards public health entities, as this is the nature of our response, is, is at least a helpful way. But we have not seen, and I have not seen from NACO and any of the email traffic, even the internal stuff with the lobbyists, a specific, use this formula. That's why CDBG is grabbed. The U.S. Conference of Mayors really pushed hard for this. So the bully pulpit of the mayors is behind this, putting CDBG in. Of course, the House Democrats, cities are a major constituency, so will easily flock into listening to those folks. And so NACO is, in some sense, swimming up a little bit of a stream here, but we do have a very, obviously, the whole power of the NACO Association behind this. So we've got the Conference of Mayors and the League of Cities on one side, and we are on the other, as we talk about this 250 billion, which is still wrapped up in problems of getting through the Senate, just basis on, on other bills that are popping through, you know, and other desires to have in there. So we are, between COVID-4 and then 3.5 that we're in in the center right now, there's lots of negotiation, but this is a critical foundational point to that bill.
Other comments?
Just that, only, Madam Chair, this is Matt Ryan. The, only to do it, just to make sure that if they need us to put something forward or reach out, we need to be aware of that. Yeah, good question Liz, but by the same token, anytime that we find out in the near future, if we have a recommendation, that would be really good, too.
Great, thank you.
Liz?
Yeah, thank you.
So Eric, just one, one kind of quick observation, I think, here, balance would be used. Well, can you hear me okay?
You're a little far away, so it's tough to hear you. A lot of background.
Can you hear?
Yeah, a little, you sound a little just better, better.
Sounds like you're taking off.
Sounds like you're on a spaceship. All right, well, we'll come back to Supervisor Babbitt in just a minute. And so Eric, what I was going to say is also, I mean, there's been some discussion about the package number four, having emphasis on infrastructure as well, and with the CDBG formula, and I'd be concerned about that in terms of shovel-ready projects and funding of infrastructure, because, again, then there wouldn't be, the, the funding wouldn't be there for counties, for infrastructure, so. But, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, you know, now's the time, as you mentioned, although this is not going to be considered until May, now's the time to, to really push for what it is that we want to see in this bill. And we had also talked about there being a job component, like a job bill, some type of, in this next package, and so I think we can't lose sight of that as well.
Correct, Madam Chairwoman. And I put up on your screens, you can see, I, this has gone up by email, I won't dwell on this document, but you have it, and I would appreciate your review. This is the, we had sent to Bob and Anna a very draft set of lists of shovel-ready things that we had from a previous submission to the delegation, back when COVID-19 really first sort of kicked into their, their world. And so this has been a more beefed-up and enhanced list. So you have this in your email, what you see in my screen, it's actually three pages that we put together, thanks to Joanne and Lucinda and the teams of putting all this projects that can be ready on a shovel-ready side for infrastructure, that is there. There is talk of a jobs bill. There's also, all of this is wrapped up into, if the President does decide that we should reopen the economy and goes down a whole nother road in that regard, you know, what willingness will Senate Republicans have to be parts of these bigger bills that are going to take some longer time to put together? Or will they rely on an economic rebound? And that, that's all. rely on an economic rebound? And that's all political theory, but part of the nimbleness which we must have going forward into this, so.
All right, thank you. Let me call on Supervisor Babbitt and see if he can restate his comments. Supervisor Babbitt?
Yeah, thank you. I don't know what went on with my connection there, but got kicked off. So just one piece on the team you're putting together, which I think is absolutely awesome, super forward-thinking. You know, as we go into budget, I hope you could help us with some of the trajectories that you are seeing on revenues as well. I think that would be a really important piece of budget for us, to hear what those projections are, obviously, what will be coming out of the JLBC. And other issues are important. We need to remember, the JLBC does not even include recessionary budgeting in any of their analyses. And so, but I think we have got to be realistic and conservative on how we walk into this next fiscal year budgeting in terms of where we think revenues go. You know, I am, I think we are going to see absolutely profound impacts to local jurisdictions. I think they are going to put local jurisdictions, we heard it on the manager's call, with some of the communities in Coquinno County, are going to be hemorrhaging jobs out of their own public sector. So just one piece, I know you're busy, but I think that would be helpful, at least for me personally, is to hear your and Joanne's and the team's thoughts about what's real look like from your vantage point.
And Chairman Archuleta, Supervisor Babbitt, yeah, so we are following JLBC and other folks, the Finance Advisory Committee just met. I think we all saw the headline, but it is, and this will be incorporated in the budget presentation, I believe, coming up on the 28th. They're talking for the state of Arizona, 31% revenue loss over the remaining four months of FY '20. So that's, you know, 31% of revenue loss. That's obviously a billion-dollar hole. So we will inform and keep bringing that forward. You see JLBC emails from me all the time. I try to pull them along. Megan and the finance team are all paying attention to them as well. So that is, that's being wrapped in. We are certainly looking at, you know, is this a V-recession? Is it more of a trough and a slower climb back out? Those kinds of, those kinds of questions. I think while I'm on it, Supervisor Babbitt, if I can, the state, we've talked about state advocacy. It continues to be a moving target as to what will happen. There are House Republicans and Democrats both talking about getting out of town, just come in, adjourn, sign, and die and leave. There are Senate folks talking about they will deal with a agreed-upon set of bills that no one will squawk about and hurry up and do some legislation and leave town. There are others who are saying we should, you know, essentially adjourn, sign, and die, come back later in the session. This is all prognostication, because no one seems to know exactly what they want to do or where they're going to go. But the point being is, I'm hearing more and more about, let's sort of get this thing wrapped up and done for the session without a lot of heavy lifting until we know where the ground settles, then come back and engage in legislation, even on how to solve the budget deficit that is likely coming. So just to give you some of that, what I'm hearing and in my conversations with Todd and with Craig and others on state advocacy side. Madam Chairwoman, I have one more topic under the roundtable. I am, if it's okay, all right. I'm going to share. So this is a request from Supervisor Fowler that I think she's talked with many of you about. This is a letter to Superintendent Schott of the Glen Canyon National Recreation Area, requesting on behalf of the county and the county health department, a closure of the areas in the National Recreation Area. And it references, obviously, the health concerns. I also want to just point out, there is a line, this was emailed, about supportive of local efforts to allow local residents to utilize natural space with appropriate social, physical distancing and other compliance with other guidelines. But essentially, the point being is to end the congregation. Much of the National Recreation Area is closed. The Utah governor has requested, had requested closures, and they were complied with. There are other closures done out of the Quagmire muscle issue. And so there are spaces, though, that are still open where people are gathering. I think, believe the city of Page is trying to work, and I don't want to speak for them, just what I have heard, to work on involving free passes for Page residents to Horseshoe Bend. I think it's an effort to try to allow some recreation and not be cooped up in the home all day. So I'm happy to turn it over to Supervisor Fowler to offer any comment. This has been run through Mr. Oxteby, and he has approved the letter and the content, and he is willing to sign as the interim chief health officer of the county. So just looking for board direction if this will be ready for signature, and we can prepare that for tomorrow.
Thank you, Eric. Vice Chair, would you like to comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Eric, thank you. This has been a process. And I did call Superintendent Billy Schott and Alex, and we've been communicating on just the concerns that are out on the National Recreation Area on the Arizona side, and then also with Page, and then just the large number of cases that are coming out of there. So anyway, you all saw the letter. I spoke with all of you. So I think this is just the right thing to do right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Supervisor Fowler?
Madam Chair?
Uh huh, yes.
Yeah, so, so I, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate putting this together. I mean, the, the challenge for me with this is, is not in its intent or anything like that. I think, you know, Page has an incredibly high level of COVID-19 right now. And, you know, it's really a hotspot, so I get it. The disconnect for me is when we say, oh, we want this closed, but by the way, we support local residents going there. I mean, I, it just, it, it doesn't feel like a clean message to me. And I'm, you know, so I wanted to just bring that up. I mean, it feels like, okay, we want to close for everyone, but those of us who are here. And I just think that's problematic. And so I'm just interested in takes on that and perspectives on that.
Thank you, Supervisor Babbitt. Any comments from board members around that?
Yeah, actually, I'll go ahead and comment on it. Yeah, I kind of wrestled around with that also, Art. After hearing from Lino on her conversations with the community, with the National Recreation Area, it sounds like they've worked themselves towards a compromise up in that area. It's not the cleanest, but by the same token, I guess I see a parallel in the discussions that we heard last week from the Forest Service in terms of if they restricted, to some degree, not just the campfires, but the idea of camping, it would still allow for people to come and visit, whether they were local or not. But by the same token, it wasn't this prolonged visit. This is a little bit different. I understand that. But, but I'm hearing, you know, a little bit level of complication at the community level that they've worked towards a compromise that this letter seems to be acceptable up there. With that in mind, you know, I'm willing to go along with it.
Others?
Yeah, I see both sides, too. And it is a, it is a compromise. So I think that for everyone to be as closely as we can on the same page is, is a good thing. I mean, sometimes we can't get the full, you know, complement of what, of what we would like. And so, you know, to the extent that we can at least create some restrictions is better than nothing. It's just, you know, when you can't, when you can't have everyone on the same page.
Anybody else? Yes, go ahead Supervisor Park.
Yes, I think that, I think that limiting the national, international visitors there, that's what we're trying to do, is to limit the movement of people over great distances. And with this virus, I think that it's a good idea to do that. I also think that it's probably a good compromise with the local, excuse me, with the local people to allow them to utilize their own, their own facilities there in their backyard. So I am for Supervisor Fowler's stand on this with the Park Service.
Thank you. And thank you all for recognizing how this, it gives the local community a chance to, local officials to work with the National Park Service or National Recreation Area and seeing how, what will fit for that particular community. So, thank you.
Okay, well, with that, then I'm hearing that there is direction to proceed with the letter, and Eric will get that out soon as possible, but certainly.
It will be out tomorrow. Yep.
By tomorrow morning. Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Eric?
That is my roundtable report. Just a reminder that we have CSA this week, make sure I'm, yes, we have CSA board meeting this week. I do want you to know that there is elections for the seats to the NACO Board and the WIR Board and alternate. They will be conducting those elections essentially through an email system. So it's incredibly important. So obviously, we're all going to meet virtually. But if you are not going to be at the CSA meeting virtually on Thursday, please make sure your proxies are turned in so that the votes can be allocated. Supervisor Archuleta is willing to stand again for the WIR alternate seat. And so it will be important, given that this is sort of our first run, I think, at probably voting for CSA things in a virtual sense like this. So I will get information as we get it from Penny to help you all, but just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Thank you, Eric. And will you just send us, if you know, the folks that will be running for those seats, the names of those folks, so we have some time to consider it?
Sure, absolutely.
You know, before Thursday?
Yep.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. And Eric, thank you for all of your leadership in getting public information out, you know, during this pandemic, and also for setting up tonight's meeting, along with Lindsay, to, for us to be able to access our meeting tonight remotely. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. It's a team I've, a good team, so.
Well, yes, you do. Oh, and speaking of your team, I understand it's somebody's birthday today on your team. And so Claire Harper's birthday, right?
Yes, it is. It's her birthday today. So I told her after we got the dashboard out, she didn't have to stay up for the whole board meeting on her birthday. So, so she is.
Okay.
It's so laying my life a dirt off.
Or anything.
No, sorry.
We don't get to roast her, sing happy birthday and embarrass her, huh?
No.
All right.
We did make sure she knew we were very happy before herself.
No, that's good. Well, I think she should have the night off, and that's wonderful. We'll just, we're wishing Claire a happy birthday tonight. Okay. And just to point out that the executive session, which was item 15A, it was not necessary. So we just finished item number 16, and we're going to go to item number 17. And this is an update from our county manager, just on various administrative items or community or regional items. Jimmy?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. To start with, the budget team did meet again yesterday in preparation for the upcoming April 26, excuse me, April 28 budget discussion. As Eric had mentioned earlier, you know, this is to kind of to further the conversation, to help inform, you know, anticipated declines in revenues for the remainder of '20, and estimates also for '21. You know, JLBC was referenced. JLBC is predicting a 24% decline in the three state general fund revenue categories. That's individual income, corporate, and TPT, what we know as sales tax. So that's 24% between the three of them. JLBC estimates a 31% decline in TPT. That specifically impacts us, because our state shared revenue, unlike cities and towns that get a portion of the income tax, we receive a portion of the state sales tax. So we are very concerned about that. And I've asked the staff, the finance team, to actually take that 31% and put it like at the top of the formula. So we, we could say we're going to have a 31% decline in our state shared revenue. That would be one answer. But I want to make sure that we're pulling that apart and its impact on the distribution formula. So Megan and that team are working on that now. Our next budget meeting is next Tuesday to further that conversation. I think I've stated before, the state does have $973 million in the budget stabilization fund, that as Eric and others have indicated, has not specifically been discussed. But we are also, again, doing our best to inform this. I know the budget team has, are participating in a webinar on Friday that PFM is putting on regarding more regional impacts and anticipated impacts. As I shared in an email, Megan and I did dialogue yesterday with the Flight Staff City Manager and Rick Tatter. You know, they reduced their sales tax projections in February, pre-COVID, by 5% based on their fall collections. And they are likely now moving forward with an additional 5% reduction. You know, there's many factors to this, but one is that the hotel motel vacancy rates are running about 90%. So there's a lot of factors that are involved in that. And that's, and that's pretty much county-wide. Madam Chair, if I could go to a brief update on the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, known as the FFCRA. As we have reported previously, there's three buckets of leave time. You know, bucket one provides 80 hours of paid time off in the event of employee cannot work due to illness. You know, the 80 hours provided by the board with the March 18th resolution, that 80 hours ended March 31st, but the 80-hour benefit continued and was seamless under the new color of the federal act. Bucket two, under the FFCRA, also provides 80 hours of paid time off at 2/3 the employer's regular pay rate in the event that the employee cannot work because they are caring for an individual who is sick, or to care for a child whose school or childcare provider is closed due to COVID-19. This part of the act requires 2/3 pay. However, the county has continued to pay the remaining 1/3 of the employees' pay to keep employees whole and respect the intent of the March 18th resolution as passed by the board. So that additional 1/3 time does not come from employees' accrual bank. So those are the first two buckets under the FFCRA. The third bucket, which is now going to be moving forward and being implemented, is an additional 10 weeks of paid time off at 2/3 pay to continue caring for a child whose school or childcare provider is closed because of COVID-19. So this provision does not begin until after use of the two weeks in bucket two, that had a similar color to this bucket. But, but under the FFCRA, the bucket three is paid at 2/3. And right now, that's what they will receive once, once an employee would now move on to bucket three. Employees can start utilizing this time, actually, tomorrow would be the time they could utilize it after having previously used the 80 hours that were in bucket two for this purpose. And they can't use it prior to that. So Erica is going to talk about this, this third bucket, which is the additional 10 weeks of paid time off at 2/3. weeks of paid time off at two-thirds pay tomorrow on the EOL, tomorrow morning on the EOLT call. And then we'll be having, then there'll be some additional information going out to the organization on that tomorrow as well. Director Phil Potts is just waiting for a finalization tomorrow regarding some issues with adult and juvenile probation and that guidance is coming from the state Attorney General's Office and then some information will be coming out about that. Lastly, we are planning a EOLT virtual meeting next Tuesday, which is the third Tuesday at 8:30 as we normally have them. We do plan to discuss and have a conversation with the EOLT regarding, you know, current budget conditions and also to give an update on the CARES Act, including the COVID-19 Funding Task Force that Eric shared with you this evening. So Madam Chair, that is my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions for County Manager Jane? Okay, well thank you very much. We will, I know the hour is late, but we're going to go ahead and just go to round table with districts and just to see if there's anything that you want to highlight of importance. And so I know everybody is busy in their districts, but if there's something that you want for the board to know about, we can do that now. Supervisor Babett?
Yeah, thank you, just very quickly, just had a really amazing opportunity, I went up to Tucson for a food distribution, met with town manager and the vice mayor up there, helped with the food distribution up there, which was great, have some flood control district discussions that I'm going to be engaging Christopher and Lucinda with on, on the 10X property up there. And then last Friday, I went out to Kaibab Estates and, you know, just, there were 10 National Guardsmen and women out there doing, I think 500 people got fed out there, 260 some odd families, just an amazing, amazing group of people who have worked hard to build a net around people who deserve a net put in place for them. So super busy on those fronts, but really appreciate everyone's work and people appreciate local government working. And, 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 you know, we don't get it 100% right, 100% of the time, but we sure work hard and, and that goes out to all the staff members in our team here. So thanks very much.
Great, thank you very much Supervisor Babett. Okay, let's go to Supervisor Ryan.
All right, thank you Madam Chair, just quickly, you know, last time we talked, I was explaining a challenge that we had out in the Parks area because they needed to have a community meeting out in their area, but they don't have Wi-Fi, so how do you proceed with it? You know, I want to compliment Jay Krusselman and his work together with the applicant and with the community to work out a solution, but in the end, the applicant withdrew his application and, but it's, it's one, just so you're aware of, this could come about in any of our districts that don't have Wi-Fi. And Jay came up with a pretty good solution, not just Wi-Fi phones, but a mailing opportunity as well associated with that. Another piece that bubbled up is, I had a chance to go out to landfill a day that they were closing down, the ability to bring branches out to the landfill, which begged the question, you know, if they're doing that, two different questions associated with it. One was for city, there's the curbside pickup, so they can still reduce their fire danger. So I was asking Lucinda if she and staff could look into, you know, what does this mean for the county residents, particularly on the east side, related to that ability and, and they're exploring that question. The second question was, what does this mean toward our voucher program? And Lucinda and staff checked into it and the city looks like they're ready to continue to proceed associated with the intent of the voucher program. So those, those are two big ones I think everybody wants to be aware of. In the meantime, we have posting, Greg and I have been making sure communities are getting updated postings, which aren't your typical, they're connected to the county information out in our district. The, that, that was a big piece. One other one that's happening is, you're aware of, we've, we've been working together with staff, trying to tap into the right phone calls with leadership, with the mayors and managers from the various cities to help us work together on the governor's calls and, and I appreciate everybody's work on that, that we've been able to, you know, kind of boil it down to which are the most appropriate questions of that particular day that we would work on and then what other channels do we use? So that's, that's been a big piece of it. One other, you know, just to throw it out there, I didn't bring it up, but it was sort of mentioned, but, you know, when I went to visit the incident command post and I was talking to Larry in communications, they had tapered off to less of the COVID-19 questions, but a lot more related to information for support for either businesses or employees or, or community members seeking utility assistance. And as you all know, I mean, we don't necessarily have the funding components, but we, we're trying to help coordinate for the sake of, you know, connections to the state programs or the federal programs where the money coming from them. But it, but it does beg the question of, as we keep working with the CARES Act and, and jobs, not just shovel ready, but that's the next phase of, we're going to have different people unemployed in our community and is there a mechanism or an opportunity that we can consider associated with that? You know, I hope our group that Eric just presented, you know, wrestles with that issue and, and that we as a board would take a look at that. You know, a lot more going on, a lot more communication going on with the communities, but that's, that's a quick update at this late hour.
Thank you very much Supervisor Ryan and thank you for bringing up the, the idea of the, the jobs bill and the conversation with Senator Sinema last week. Want to thank you for thinking about that and advocating for it. Supervisor Fowler? No, big problem, sorry Supervisor Parks, District 4 next, Supervisor Parks.
Thank you Madam Chair, I don't have very much, I, I went to, to Phoenix yesterday and I was able to sit in on a discussion with Representative Blackman and Senator Sylvia Allen and a couple other representatives that I don't know well, but I was a lowest man on the totem pole there as far as politically, but anyway, the, the discussion was about COVID-19, it was about testing, it was about testing for antibodies in folks that have recovered and the, the most important thing that came across to me there was that the folks at that clinic where I, where I was had been working with, separating, they had some folks that had recovered and they had been separating the, the blood plasma from the blood and the serum that has the antibodies in it. They, that's a proven way to, to get ahead of a virus, although the way it's done now, it seems that it's way too late because they're giving it to people who are past the point of no return, no return more or less, but it's pretty exciting and it is the method that they used to defeat the Ebola vi, Ebola virus a number of years ago. So it has a lot of promise and they would like to come up and, or not come up necessarily, but make a presentation to the board about this. And I think that I mentioned it to Mr. Jane this morning and gave him the contact information for, for the folks at that clinic. They have some real exciting things that they're doing and, and Jimmy shared that with, with Marie and hopefully we can get, get them to give us a visual or a video presentation soon. The other thing that I have is, things are pretty quiet on Navajo in my district, people have been sticking really close to home, they're all worried. They have gotten the well up and tested at Loop, tested for potability and it's certified now as, as potable and they, they are encouraging folks to start coming there to haul their water from there. So that's, that's a positive. Also on the ambulance that I've been talking about for months, we are going to get that delivered probably at the end of this week. Dave was working on getting the decals off of it, getting it cleaned up today and yesterday, so we should be able to, to take possession of it and get it to Byron so that he can look it over and make sure that it's in good shape, fix, fix anything that may be wrong with it at this point and then we'll be looking to, to get it up to Tubusity as quickly as we can. And that's it, thank you.
Great, that sounds exciting, that's wonderful. Thank you for your leadership in, in getting that ambulance to the community who really needs it. Supervisor Fowler?
Thank you. Seems like we're doing more, we're in meetings more than ever before. I've been joining the Tubusity, the Tubusity chapter meets every, every day, they're quite organized in their emergency response, working with the hospital and all the healthcare providers and the community there. They had a food distribution today, they turned the fairgrounds in Tubusity to a distribution center, a staging center or staging ground, I think they call it. So Navajo Nation EOC has taken over and today St. Mary's food truck was out there, there were three trucks, but so far that's the only one that is scheduled to be there. We are still, the network in Tubusity, all the, all of the providers, they continue to meet and even in Page, some of the issues that have come up from there and I think I brought it up some, somewhere with the governor's office is that people are, are using up their minutes and also even their internet, they have to upgrade it because they're working at home now. So that's created a challenge and then some people, they have phones and by the time the, they, one example was DESI time they got to them to be able to talk to someone, their minutes were almost out. So we brought that up to the governor, the, one of the calls. We have, I'm now communicating and actually meeting with the Arizona Superintendent Hoffman's Office, the staff from there. They oversee all of the tribal schools, Bureau of Indian Education Schools and the public schools and so today I connected them with the Navajo Nation EOC, so they're able to work with them regarding the meal deliveries for students. And so they're trying to see what schools actually deliver meals and how, how are they handled? The other part of that is instructions. The governor and the superintendent announced that those two were going to continue meals and instructions, but in certain schools, it's not happening, so that's what they're trying to do. They've met with the Navajo Nation Education Office as well with that. Tomorrow, there should be some decisions that are being made and so those are coming through. So that's been a lot of going back and forth on that one. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with the Navajo Nation Council that is, Navajo Nation Council Speaker's Office. The speaker holds a meeting with the Western Agency Council and that is tomorrow and the FMC and Page Banner and the Little Colorado River Hospital, I think that's what it's called, and Mark Carroll will be on that call. So I have them on the agenda, they'll be able to deliver a report there. And I also talked to the NTUA and Water Resource again and the Navajo Nation EOC and one of the, and my question was, there's these media, national media saying that there is, Navajo Nation is running out of water and, and food, mainly water, that was the story. And so, and it was even on one of the channels from the Phoenix Channel. So this last president's meeting with all the chapters across Navajo Nation, 110 chapters, they, David Nez and Pro Yelloman, they both said, you know, there, there is no, we're not running out of water, all essential services continue. And one of them is that, you know, even though the chapters may have limited hours, but they manage, if they manage a watering point, those are still open, they manage a senior center, those are open, public health nurses and public health workers continue to go to the, the high-risk patients and also senior centers are open and they're making visits to these seniors. So they just said, if the chapters, you have any issues out there, please let us know, but up to this point, every chapter is saying we're doing okay. So that's where I think they, there's this, these stories that are coming out that are very dramatic, but there is no water turned off, there, all the waters are, are actually open and they've really worked hard to, to fix any wells that may be down so that people have more access to water. And that's where Supervisor Parks is talking about the Loop Well. So it's just, since it's been in the news, I thought I'd just bring that up, that they don't know where people are running out of water. Yes, people do haul water and it's always been that way, but it's also that way here in the county too, people call, haul water. So anyway, that's just, I just thought I'd bring that up. We're hoping that we'd be able to, you know, the VIDA program has been shut down at United Way, has been closed and we're hoping that we'll be able to work, work to revive that and I've asked Navajo United Way if we can complete the, the program under their umbrella because they have a license also. And so hopefully that will work out, but you know, everything takes time to figure out how things are going to be done. So that's, that's where that one is and we submitted all of the volunteers across the county that are certified, that were certified with the United Way, were still certified, those were all submitted to Navajo Way, hoping that we'll be able to complete the, the processes there. We did a, a call in. we'll be able to complete the processes there. We did a call-in on small businesses and self-employed. There are a lot of people out there, many, many people that are self-employed that don't realize that they are eligible for unemployment and certain benefits through the small business. You know, you have caterers, you have artisans, you have musicians, you have even medicine men, you know, those are, and women that are, you know, they're farriers out there. They're all self-employed. And so, they're eligible for certain benefits and they don't know it, and that really trying hard to get that information out there. I think we should all do that. There's a lot that don't realize that they're actually eligible for these things. And then, just recently, Cindy, I think, emailed out, you know, it's even more open now with the decision that was just recently made. So, almost everyone is eligible for these benefits now. So, anyway, so that's been a big focus there. So, I think that will be, that will be it. All right, thank you.
Yes, and thank you for interfacing with that about the VIDA program and making sure that that continues to, we continue to help them that way and the many ways that you're providing information and communication with the Navajo Nation. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Can I just, Madam Chair, I just want to thank all the staff. I mean, we just cannot do this without you all. Thank you so much. Everything that I report out, I just, you know, it's just really great to work with a great team here at the county. Thank you.
Thank you. So, for the Chair's report, I just wanted to quickly go over a couple of kind of calendar items. As you know, I have been on, like all of us, have been on multiple phone calls and video conferences and just representing the county where I'm needed. And tomorrow, the elected official leadership team meeting at 9:00, it'll be, I will be on that call and Supervisor Parks will be on that call, the two of us. And then for Thursday's Governor's Call, Supervisor Ryan will be on that and Supervisor Parks will be on that call. And then there is a call that you all should receive an invitation for, and that is Senator McSally is having a call as well. And so, if you don't have that on your calendar, we can get that out. But we likely need to make a decision on who would like to be on that call so we don't have a quorum. So, we'll touch bases on that. Jimmy can, Eric can touch bases with me and then he can touch bases with others on that. And then the Senator Sinema usually has a call and Supervisor Ryan and I have been on that call. But if there are others who would like to rotate into that call, I would be happy to step out and allow others to be, to afford everybody the opportunity to be on at least one of the calls. And so, just let me know so that we can rotate folks in these various meetings. And then the City and Towns calls, which happened Monday, Wednesday and Friday, we had Supervisor Babbitt on that call on Monday. And so, if there's anybody who wants to be on the Cities and Towns call this week, either Wednesday or Friday, let me know so you can be rotated in. Okay? And let's see, I did, I did give a, I was asked to be part of a meeting today of community members who wanted to have an update just on the coronavirus. And I thought, you know, it probably, at some point, we should probably have like some, a town hall or a mechanism to be able to take questions from the public. I mean, certainly, it would be, it would be something that would happen by phone call, call-in number, or through Teams, like we're doing this meeting. I mean, we are providing the updates that each of, at the board meeting like we did today and the opportunity for members of the public to listen in and actually to ask questions as well. But seems like there is a desire for people to be able to ask questions, so maybe a mechanism for that. And also looking at Supervisor Ryan set at the call center and seeing what kind of questions are coming through to then let us know what type of information we need to be getting out to, out to the public. And then today, I think, actually, I think several of us at different times were probably part of the call with the Zoom call for Earth Day. And so, I just wanted to let you know that there is a last opportunity tomorrow to be able to be, if you weren't able to complete the videotaping today, then there is an opportunity, or yesterday or today, there's an opportunity tomorrow to be part of that Earth Day event that they'll put on via the web. And so, they're just basically interviewing, they want to interview county supervisors about your connection to the earth and to the land and thoughts on climate change. And so, in celebration of Earth Day, which this year's Earth Day topic is climate change. So, if you want to do that, I know the information is probably in your inbox in terms of who to call if you want to be part of that interview process. Other than that, I mean, hopefully I've been keeping you updated, either by like personal calls and touching bases with you. But it's always, if you want to have more information, just let me know and let me know about the calls that, if you want, that you want to be a part of with the ones that I mentioned just a few minutes ago. Okay? And I think that's it for tonight. Jimmy, is there anything else you can think of or any of the DCMs that are still on the phone, anything that we might have missed that the Board needs to know about?
Madam Chair, I don't have anything else. Just a quick reminder, and we've mentioned it several times tonight, that we will be having a board meeting on Tuesday, April 28th, starting at 10:00 and scheduling for a full day.
Okay.
Hey, Liz.
Yes, uh-huh, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Matt. The, just a piece that just bubbled up earlier today, Lucinda's probably already aware. I don't know if we need to take advantage of it, but the State Transportation Board meeting that was scheduled that got canceled when we were all going to join them, they now are going to do a virtual meeting for this region, but it's for the state this Friday. So, just to mention that, if we decided to provide any comments, I'm not sure, you know, what rises to the top right now. If I could be on the mayor's call tomorrow, the Cities and Towns call and elected leadership on Thursday, that's pretty helpful for me gathering information as it leads into the governor's calls. Thank you.
Okay, great. We will schedule that. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could just, just a quick reminder that City and Town calls are at noon, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and EOLT calls are now Monday, Wednesday, Friday at 9:00 a.m. So, those two calls do not happen on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Oh, so Matt, if you want to be on tomorrow's EOLT, it would be you and Supervisor Parks because then, thank you so much, Jimmy, yes, because then there would, that would be the call that would happen before Thursday's Governor's Call.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, super. So, it'll be you and Supervisor Parks on the, on the call tomorrow morning at 9:00. All right, great. Well, thank you all. I appreciate it. I know we had a long meeting tonight, but really good information. And we did it through video conferencing through Teams, and we will continue to perfect it as we go along. But really appreciate all of you, you know, moving to this, to this format. And appreciate the members of the public who are still on and who joined us for portions of the meeting tonight. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.